Janine, may I please have a roll call?
Sandra Bradford.
Yeah, here. It's gonna be one of those nights, guys.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Collester-Lazari.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clopton.
Here.
All right, so Diana, may I just ask you to verify that you're traveling for employment requirements that prevent you from physically attending?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so do I have a motion then and a second to allow Diana Clopton to participate telephonically in tonight's Board of Education meeting pursuant to Section 7 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act because of her absence due to employment purposes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and a roll call, please.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Collester-Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, so let's go ahead and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. So my report is up first, and I'll just say thank you for your patience as we were a little bit late. We've been having some Internet difficulties which caused some of the delay, so please be patient if we have to make adjustments throughout the meeting. We have a lot of great discussions tonight on how we're going to be empowering personal excellence in every learner this year, so please stay tuned for all the exciting conversations. I trust everyone is enjoying their summer. At our next meeting, school will have started. It's exciting. Students and staff will be enjoying all of our referendum dollars at work, especially at Barrington High School, and I think we've also had updates at Lyons and Grove and Sunny Hill. I'm gonna forget one or two. So we'll be hearing more about the 2020 referendum dollars later tonight, so thanks in advance to our administration and to Pepper who have worked really hard to spend the community's money very efficiently and effectively. I also want to thank the board again. As we start the school year this year, we'll have full day kindergarten across the district, and we will be opening our K-Lab at Barrington High School, so very exciting, and thank you again to the administration for making this happen for our community. It's exciting to see something come to fruition so quickly that this board itself had put forward, so I appreciate your work as well. Since we met last, the Referendum Advisory Committee met, and they reviewed our proposal, our changes to Option 3, and they gave us their insights and feedback, and we thank them for their incredible service. They talked to us about how we can be communicating the learning spaces, the career pathway opportunities, a community auditorium that will be available for all, and also the safety and accessibility aspects of the referendum that we'll be talking about later as well. I should have said this earlier, but we have a little picture. Several board members were able to attend Dr. Bynne's retirement luncheon, and while we were there, we actually got a little bit of a sneak peek of the Barrington High School cafeteria, which is gonna be amazing for all our students this fall. But there we are, and we anointed Dr. Bynne with an Illinois hat, so that was kind of fun. We had a lot of college conversations this year, so that was very appropriate. Barry and I also had the pleasure of welcoming back our teachers last week, all of our new teachers. It's a very exciting event to go to that luncheon to meet all of the new teachers, and it's something I look forward to every year. And per our priorities to continuously improve our communications with our staff, I sent the board, I sent you all an email about our breakfasts and dinners and engagements with the BEA, so I don't think I heard from everyone yet, so if you guys could check those dates and let me know. Our first date, I think, is in September, and I'd like to send out the schedule for the year, so we all know when we'll be meeting with the BEA. And then, last thing I wanted to mention is to the community, stay tuned, we've got an exciting discussion this evening on our board meeting time and agenda, so there's a potential change coming, so please stay tuned. I think it's our last discussion item this evening. And that is all for my report. All right, so next up is public comment. We do have several people that have signed up for public comment. The board values your thoughts and opinions, and we will ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with the Board Equity Statement that states we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. The board has agreed to the rules set forth in our policy in which public commenters have agreed to abide. Just a reminder that this is a board meeting that occurs in public, it's not a public meeting. Public comment is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Rinkelman to follow up and report back to the board. So with that, Marsha McClary. It's good to see you.
Good to see you too. Okay, I'm Marsha McClary, and I wanted to first say thank you so much for the phone policy. I think that is fantastic for our district to get the kids focused and keep the phones down during the classes. Much appreciated. So moving on to Title IX, so I think you guys will be talking about it later, but basically there's been a lot of changes to the Title IX rules, and original intent of the rules was to protect women and men and give them was to protect women and men and give them equal opportunities, and a lot of it was about sports, and now there's been some fairly controversial and highly litigated changes. As of yesterday, there were over 27 cases on the new policies that, you know, had been made, changed, and they've been in place for 50 years. So I will read first an injunction that's been, the relief is provided to Barrington Schools because all of Barrington Schools are listed to be exempt if they want to be from having to implement this, and they're able to pause it. And I did attend the policy meeting this morning, and the question I have for the Board and the lawyers is what's the Illinois statute and laws or policies that we would have a problem with because this is a national Department of Ed change, and you've now been given relief under this injunction? So I'm not clear on why it can't be paused, and that was kind of the rationale in the policy meeting this morning I heard for moving forward with it. So I just would put that out to you, what's the reason? Because it is very controversial, and it is gonna be disruptive to put changes in and then potentially have to reverse them later. So I'll just read this quick. Landmark ruling, Federal Court Kansas issued opinion halting Biden Departments of Ed Title IX changes brought by, and I'll skip this part, organizations joined by Kansas, Wyoming, Utah, Alaska, as well as other students and interest groups, of which Moms for Liberty, there is a member from every school in Barrington, so in Moms for Liberty's members, all those schools are part of the injunction. And reading just from a couple areas in here, and I'll email this to you guys after the meeting, the judge said there was not one lawyer in the courtroom, including undersigned, who was able to offer any possible explanation of what a parent should tell their child about the limits of legal speech at their schools on the topic of gender identity or sexual orientation under this final rule. The result is that speeches chill because what student wants to run the risk of being accused of sex-based harassment and subjected to an investigation and potential discipline? I would challenge the Board to think about a six- or seven-year-old trying to understand people changing genders and names potentially on a fairly frequent basis, you know, kids are kids, and how that works in a system like this, and how you implement that. And if you're given the chance to pause, why wouldn't you take that opportunity?
Next up is Eleanor Sweet-McDonald.
Well, that's interesting, that's all I've gotta say.
Yeah, we have a new bell. Sounded worse than usual.
We're surprised.
You must be the internet. Oh, bear with me, I'm Nikki Newkid here. So I'm Eleanor, for the record, I'm Eleanor Sweet-McDonald. I'm here on behalf of the Village North Barrington, another taxing body, and I'll say in the spirit of the other mayors that I work with, I think I'll take a little license and say I'm here. Pretty much just on a broad base, bear with me, I think you may know that Sam Oliver's been representing the village for me on your committee relative to the referendum. And so I'm gonna stay for the end, which I think is the punchline, which is somewhere on your agenda, which I couldn't get a copy of. I would encourage you in the future to consider having copies of your agenda out there on the table coming in. I think it serves the public very well. So someone lent me a copy on my phone I don't have in front of me. So it said there that you, the proposal, I believe, of the referendum that you're gonna vote on tonight, I don't have the item number in front of me, or maybe it's up there somewhere, is to hypothetically propose approving a referendum for 64 million. So I'm gonna assume that that's true unless you're gonna amend it later, but I'll stay just to see what the end of the story is. But in the event that it is a 64, I want to applaud you because my understanding is there is a $6 million that we're rolling over that was unused from a previous referendum. And so I want to be respectful that I respect, number one, what your vote is, I'm not here to discuss that. I'm not here to discuss the vote of any of the residents because I believe in the democratic process. And so I have a strong belief that our community will pick either to support the referendum or not, or what they feel is in their best interest for their families. But with that said and done, I do want to encourage you as another taxing body to please consider going forward with strong, good, solid stewardship in a very fiscally conservative manner in terms of really making sure that we are doing what is, what is right. So sometimes you can have a dilemma of what is a need versus a want, and I personally think relative to philosophy, I do weigh on the need, in this case, being stronger than the want, okay? And so I just really wanted to say that, number one, thank you for everything you're doing for our community, but to share with you my philosophy, and I do believe I can speak for some of my peers, relative to we believe in being fiscally conservative and being very solid, prudent stewards of the funds of our residents. I, in the case of the Village North Barrington, probably relative to all my peers in the Barrington area, have one of the highest dependency on property taxes. As you know, and you know better than I do, hypothetically, the average taxpayer in the Barrington area is paying 68% of their tax bill is going to the school district. Even if it becomes 69 with the 260 you're proposing per half million dollars, it still is, you know, a bit of a bite. I'm not saying it's not a good situation, I don't want to go down that path, but there again, as someone on my side of the desk, we are constantly, you know, hearing about the size of the tax bill going to the school district, and for some people, it does cause them a financial hardship. So thank you again for your time, and I'm one second. Look at that. Rachel Turk.
Hi, my name is Rachel Turk. I have two boys who graduated from the district and one who is about to become a junior at the high school. I wanted to echo what Marsha said earlier about thanking you for the letter going out about the phones down. I totally support that, and I hope a lot more parents take that seriously and encourage their kids, that is a good thing. The second thing I wanted to bring up primarily was that I recently participated in the Referendum Committee over the past few months, and it was very informative and very well organized, I thought. Just one thing I wanted to reiterate in front of the whole Board was that several people publicly and then privately mentioned that among their peers and even in the group itself, that they privately expressed support for increasing the annual budget for capital improvements and repairs, particularly like on an annual basis. Like people were a little bit confused, a little bit irritated that it had to go to a referendum in the first place to take care of things like mechanicals. Like we're talking about the need versus the want, like we have to get the plumbing, we have to get the, you know, the air handlers, we have to get the roofing fixed. So those are the things, like the Board has a great track record of keeping our expenses down, but it also has the fiduciary responsibility to take care of our assets and our buildings. And with such a huge amount of square footage under roof and the age of some of our buildings, it just makes sense if we can, and I think we've kept it flat for the past few summers, like how much we spend on, every summer, getting, keeping up with our capital improvements. So I just wanted to express that sentiment to the Board, when I know you're gonna be talking about it. You've done an amazing job trying to come up with very innovative ways to come up with all the funding and really trimmed down, we had what was just like about a 75 million want down to a 64 million, and came up with really creative ways to be very, what's the word, just flexible with all of your classroom space. So commend, kudos to that, but I just also want to give you, I think, maybe encouragement that the people behind you would support a bigger increase for the annual maintenance so we don't have to do another referendum for basics. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And last up, Jodi Hart.
Hi, my name is Jodi Hart. I have lived in the village with my husband for the past 20 years. We have four kids, our oldest graduated from Barrington High School in '21, and we have a junior, a sophomore, and an eighth grader who's gonna start next week. I'm also a member of Moms for Liberty, and I am aware that they have filed a lawsuit against the unconstitutional changes to Title IX. And I am here to say it would be premature action of the Board to update any policy, it would be a waste of time, administration time, as well as Board time, and therefore a waste of the tax dollars that we pay into District 220. Therefore, I urge the Board to agree to wait until the conclusion of the Title IX lawsuits before any policy or procedural changes are made or adopted by District 220. Sometimes proactive things are good, you know, it's good to be proactive, but sometimes it's good to wait until you need to act. Therefore, thank you for all that you do for our village and the district. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Jodi. All right, that concludes our public comment. All topics that we will be discussing in further detail tonight, so please stay and hear, I think everything that was brought up at public comment will be addressed, although there's only, there's no action taken on any policy tonight, I just wanna make sure that's clear, that'll be a discussion item. All right, so with that, next up is Dr. Rinkelman's report.
Thank you, Sandra. All right, let's go to our first slide, Janine. So summertime is a really nice opportunity for our staff and our administrators to really spend time diving a little bit deeper into professional development, making sure that we're staying current and up to date with any changes that occur, as well as preparing for the upcoming school year. So it was a busy summer. As soon as school was out back in June, we immediately provided professional development to all of our classified staff through our brand-new You First program, providing opportunities for them to receive professional development in a variety of areas. In addition, our summer university for our certified staff, the offerings continues to grow, and the participation by our teachers continues to have more and more interest. This summer, once again, we brought in a speaker, George Curros came in and provided insight into his educational research. We conducted Title IX training for all of our administrators. They all came back in July, again, we're gonna talk more about that tonight. Additional trainings on addressing student behaviors and professional development for our administrators in that area. We had several administrators from all levels attend Character Strong Workshop in Washington this summer. Last week, we did new educator onboarding, and we kick off the new school year on Thursday, and we will have all of our staff participate in a day-long professional development for our new Character Strong program as that launches the school year. So sometimes people ask, what do you do in the summer? We do a lot, there's a lot going on in the district. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we've, we've been involved in, and really how those help prepare us for the upcoming school year. All right, next slide, Janine. Students continue and families to enroll and register, and we've been monitoring this throughout the summer months. I'm happy to report that as we are approaching, we are just days away from the majority of our students returning on Monday, the vast majority of our sections across our eight elementary schools continues to remain at or below class-size guidelines. You have the updated chart hot off the press at your place this evening, so you can take a look at that. I do have an update. So, you know, as I've monitored, I've said, we're gonna make some adjustments. Early on, we started adding kindergarten sections. I have not added any additional sections because we're at or within, in most cases, for elementary. At middle school, I did authorize a section of extended science for our middle school, and let me explain how that came to be. We changed some of our practice this summer, that we took a look at any students that moved in or that were recommended for consideration for extended services, that we tried to complete that work and those assessments and that evaluation this summer so that that could be complete and in place for students to start. Our past practice was we were conducting that work immediately at the start of school, which created some transitions for students, right? They started in one course and they may be changing to another. We were able, because we changed our practice, to complete those over the summer months, so students start the year in that course placement. Good news, we had more students qualify, which required us to open up an additional section. So I did use a .2 of superintendent contingency this last week. This is a small fraction, but I think it'll make a large, while it's one section, it'll make a large impact to be able to have more students participate in that program. And no changes at the high school. We continued to, again, be within class-size guidelines, and we're ready to roll at the high school. So that's the, that's the update on enrollment, go ahead.
Sorry, Dr. Rinkelman, was that at Prairie or Station?
It was. It was at Prairie, Prairie Campus. Mm-hmm.
Well, since we paused, I think this chart looks great.
Yeah.
And there, and I do see the correction to what was, what was amiss last time.
Yep.
So I think, I think we're in great shape.
Yes, we do have two sections of dual-language kindergarten at Roslin, as noted on this sheet.
What are, like, there, I mean, we do have some sections over, and some sections approaching, that are, are you having to shuffle anything around?
Not at this time, we've been working with our principals, and I think where places, where those students are placed, as of this morning, we're in a good place. I don't think, or anticipate that we're gonna open up any additional sections, but we still have a couple days, so.
Really going gangbusters, huh?
It is, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've seen, we've seen some increases at particular grade levels all summer long, but I think we're, we're well positioned right now. All right, I'm gonna keep going, but if you have another thought, you can always ask me a question at the, at the end. Another update, early release days. We continue to communicate something new for this school year is that we're able to provide four early release days for students this school year. The dates are August 30th, September 27th, March 20th, and April 17th. These will be in addition to our regular Wednesday early, early release days, just to be clear, because that question came up, like, oh, do these replace? Nope, we're still doing what we've always done as a school district on Wednesday, having that early release time, which does allow our staff to conduct meetings and so forth. But these are additional early release days that'll provide more opportunities for our staff to have a little bit longer period of time than that 70 minutes at the end of the day to really look at student data, plan instruction, and engage in professional development. So we're trying to communicate this because it is something new for our community to make sure it really, everybody gets it on their family calendar and they're aware that we do have those early release days. The end times were also, we've had some questions around that, what to anticipate just from logistics of getting your child. If, let me give an example, if your student, it typically takes 17 minutes from dismissal for them to arrive at your door, whether that's at 2:40 at the end of a regular day for elementary, or if it's at 10:45, add 17 minutes. So it's, it's the same amount, we're anticipating the same routes and so forth, there may be some efficiencies, we're gonna obviously see how this, we're gonna learn as we go, but in a general sense, transportation and in conjunction with our staff, we believe those routes, you can anticipate the same travel time, okay? That's another question that came up that I thought I would highlight. So more to come, we'll give some highlights on how we're utilizing that time and how it's going throughout the school year. Okay, as did come up a little bit at public comment, I do want to spend a little bit of time, you know, I've sent out two district-wide communications this week, a welcome back yesterday, and then today I sent out a communication on really cellphone or mobile digital devices, and so I wanted to provide a little context. So, you know, this topic is one that's being discussed here, as well as districts in neighboring communities, as well as nationally. And so this is, this topic is one of our 28 strategic priorities, and it's really focused on social media awareness and the use of digital devices. And so as this becomes one of our next, of the seven objectives that we're going to be working on during this school year, we really want to take the time this year to do an in-depth study of digital device use, but while we're doing the study, we wanted to remind our families and our students that we do currently have expectations in place, right? And so I sent out a letter today just reminding our families and our students of those expectations that digital mobile devices are not permitted in our learning environments. That's our current guideline and expectations, and they should be powered off and put away during class time. And I asked our parents to partner with us because this is a topic we're gonna be talking about more, studying, but while we're doing that work, I think it's important that we adhere to the expectations that we already have in place. So more to come on that. Our admin team will be putting together a plan for how we're going to work on this objective, and as I've said in the past, sometimes we're able to do the work in-house on those 28 objectives. This is one, it's gonna be broader, more, more activities, more participation by the Board. I'm gonna be looking for some Board support, you know, I think that's important to have opportunities for our community, our families to do this work together. And so our team will be providing an update this fall on what that looks like, and we'll be looking for some direction from the Board. So more to come on that topic. And then, exciting, so we're gonna hear a little bit more about Build 220 this week. As we've rolled out- As we've rolled out new parking lots and traffic patterns at Barrington High School, we've typically taken a little bit of time, I gave an update previously on this topic. I want to spend just a couple of minutes walking through some of the updates with our Board of Education, as well as, you know, any of our community members that are tuning in to kind of hear about what's happening with Barrington High School, right? So a couple of highlights. We've added secure vestibules, that was part of Bill 220, right? We currently have a secure vestibule to enter Barrington High School through Door 1, which is the one that faces Main Street, the main entrance underneath that canopy, right? But the intent was to increase and actually just do the size of the high school campus, to have three secure locations. So proud to say those are complete and we're going to be welcoming students into those three areas. They are displayed on the screen. You also have, I believe in your packet, a blow-up, because if your eyes are old like mine, I thought this may be helpful. So we have three entrances now. Door 1 is the front door, right? It's the one that faces Main Street. We're also now, sometimes it's referred to as the athletic entrance or Door 34. We now have a canopy at that door system and we have a secure vestibule right inside in order to process students. On the north end, the far end of the diagram, Door 27, we've now added a secure vestibule on the very north end of the campus. This is the door that's right outside the fitness center and the pool and it faces those new outdoor fields, the multipurpose turf field. This is where student buses will be dropping off. So now, if you take a bus, you will be processed and checked in through the secure vestibule at Door 27. If you are a student driver or you're being dropped off by your parent, you will go in through Door 34. If you are a student walker, you can walk in at Door 1, right? And so the intent here, as you can see, we're trying to improve safety by separating those three important ways that students arrive and leave campus, right? So that buses have their own area where they're coming in, student drivers and drop-off is coming in from a door, and we're separating that from where we're going to have our heaviest flow of most of our walkers come in from town, right? And they walk in at Door 1, that's where the bulk. So real intentional design of trying to improve safety by having three separate locations that separate some of that pedestrian and vehicle traffic. So let's kind of walk through the map a little bit. So as I mentioned, that front lot, the Main Street Lot, that is primarily for staff and visitors. We're trying to keep that to just the staff, buses, and visitors that visit Barrington High School. Again, try to have as few a cars as possible for our student walkers to enter, so we're directing all of our students that are coming to Barrington High School to park, parking is going to be contained in that Hart Road Lot. Hart Road Lot has been improved, again, with safety in mind. We used to have a center driveline where if you parked on the far west side of that parking lot, closest to Hart Road, you had to walk across vehicle traffic to get to the building. That has been removed, there is a pedestrian walk there, but all of those drivelines now are routing you to the high school, right? So if, whether you're driving down that lane or walking, you're going with traffic, not trying to cross against it. Another intentional safety design. In addition, what we refer to as the lollipop, if you look at where it says exit and enter coming in the main entrance by the signal, that's on Hart Road, that driveline has been reconfigured. We've removed some of the parking spaces that actually were on the loop and we've widened that, so there's multiple lanes now for drop-off and pickup. Again, getting you closer to the curb while traffic can still continue, getting students an access in a safe manner, right? Those are a few of the highlights as far as where we're headed. Mr. Gillette, Mr. Williams are here tonight, they can respond to any additional questions, but I wanted to make sure we just took the time stepping through some of those features. I want to spend another minute on the safety and security vestibules. We're also changing some of our practices. These were designed with canopies. We're going to be processing our students as they enter with mobile devices, so that we're actually checking access and addressing any items before they enter the building. So if we ever did need to lock down, things that are happening outside the building are being addressed and then students will enter. So Mr. Gillette's working with the campus attendants, we'll have teams set up now that we've got three secure vestibules to come through. Once the main rush is done, then students can go up to that transaction window that's now in place when they arrive and so forth. But I just want to highlight some of the safety features that we've, we planned for four years ago that are now starting to be realized because the construction is done, okay? I just have two more slides to, to mention. So this slide demonstrates by color coding some of the changes of where individuals can park. You can see primarily the, I'll start from the bottom of the image, primarily the new Main Street Lot that was added last year, that's all permitted staff parking, as well as those designated areas for visitors, as well as the ADA accessible spots closest to the main entrance, right? Going from the main lot over to the Hart Road Lot, you can see all of those spaces designated in green, those are all for student parking. We added 30 additional spots by removing that center driveline. Again, that was an outcome that we talked about of, that came up, I think just about in every conversation when we were having the Build 220 referendum conversations, was "Can you please add more parking?" We were able to realize that, that's now complete, so we've added more parking at Barrington High School. Another feature I want to point out, so if you look at the right side of the image, we were able, one of the things we wanted to do was try to limit access driving around the building. Wanted to make sure that really with the connection now on the southwest side, that you can navigate without having to drive around. Why is that important? It's important because we have students that leave the building that access all of those field spaces north of the high school. We want to limit the amount of traffic that is driving by that the students would have to cross. So if you're at the high school, we now have an operational gate at that location where you used to drive around. So in that lower right corner, there is now a gate there that will be accessed by a keyfob in order to access it. So our buses will have keyfob access, our grounds department will have access, but a typical individual visiting Barrington High School won't be able to drive around and utilize that ring road around the back of the high school. We were able to update the bus parking, which is designated there in that yellow color, so that received new paving, new striping. Pleased to report, all of our buses will now fit with the new configuration in that space. So if you are a bus rider, all of those students can go to one location to pick up a bus. These are all the improvements and the little things that I think will really enhance the operations at the high school, and again, so much of it has safety in mind. And then the last slide, Janine. We do, of course, have students that park up at the Fields of Dreams parking lot, our very, the furthest north parking lot, that's designated in green. One of the outcomes that we talked a lot about was can students, you know, can we get a way to get students from that far north lot down to campus safely without walking along all the traffic that's on Hart Road? Just want to remind everybody, we built an intentional wide path to get everyone down safely and far away from vehicle traffic. Those students will also be able to navigate now down, they will go in that same secure vestibule, Door 27, at the north end of the pool and fitness area. So that's kind of an update, there's lots of information for high school parents, but I don't think it hurts for our whole community to hear as people visit the campus. So I'm going to stop there, that's, that's the end of the pieces, I'm sure I forgot some things. We've got the experts in the room in the back if there's any questions. And I just, I really want to compliment our high school staff, they have worked tremendously hard this summer, they've put a lot of thought into this, they've tried to provide, I didn't make any of these visuals, they're theirs, just to be clear, but they've done a wonderful job of making sure we're putting all the operations in place to start the school year with all the new facility enhancements. Any questions that I can answer for?
Well, you're not going to be shocked that I have a few.
Okay.
First of all, I already texted Craig to say how amazing it looks, I was over there the other day and it looks so great, and even just the landscaping, it looks really awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we go to the main picture? Thank you.
Yep.
So cars aren't going to be able to turn left out of here anymore, or right?
Correct, good point of clarification. When we were doing construction, we did have the ability to, we had a special permit to be able to have people exit. That has now returned and you'll see the new striping has been put down, the temporary signs that indicated that access were actually taken out on Friday, I saw the guy yanking on it, that's all been removed, those are now, that's an entrance only.
Okay, so anyone in the village, basically your only exit is the light up there to get back this way.
Or here.
Well, you can't go left.
What's that?
You can't go left.
You can't go left, it's a right, it's a right only.
Yeah, I'm saying if you live in the village, you have to go, okay. My next question, because I was driving it today. Okay, so when you come around that, the S thing?
Yep.
You can only go left, which makes sense to me, you merge in there, but is traffic in this little section here going both ways?
I'm going to phone a friend and...
It is.
We're getting the thumbs up, so it is both ways.
Because the arrows are confusing, I got to be honest.
It comes from the lollipops.
Want to take this? All right, let me do this one, I think it's actually, so, so the arrows are in there, we've got signage coming and on the first day of school, we will make sure that we have plenty of people out there to kind of reset the patterns on it.
You're right.
Yeah, we were out there watching today.
Before I get an email from someone that says, "Can you use the microphone?", that's what you get.
I did great, by the way.
So we will have people out there, there are some adjustments already, as Dr. Winkelman mentioned, you know, the plans are there, we walked it today, we are going to make some adjustments to some of the arrows and signage to make it much clearer and to improve our traffic flow as students are coming onto campus and students are leaving campus for the school day. So we will have a number of people out there on Monday and Tuesday and as long as we need to kind of retrain and get people situated. So understood, we are observing out there today, we did see some confusion and there are certainly a couple of adjustments that we need to make and some communication pieces that need to be added.
It wasn't me, I'm just saying.
No, it was, it was not you.
So just to clarify, just to clarify, the biggest change I saw, well, one, the lollipop was open, thank you, but two, the biggest change is that coming out of the lollipop, instead of only going one way around, you can now turn right, right? Because we got rid of that center lane, so now there's two-way traffic.
That is, that is to be continued. We'll just wait on that. Because, because there, as we were looking at the traffic flow on that, we're going to do a little bit of adjustment on that.
Yeah, I could see that potentially being a problem, especially too for our students who are used to one-way traffic, not seeing...
Well, and more because that's where you line up if you're picking kids up after sports and stuff, and that doesn't leave a lane for you to go by then, you know what I mean?
Yes, yes. So you, you, the two of you are exactly spot on. We're going to make some adjustments out there before Monday, so that the traffic flow is much easier to understand and it's much more efficient for us, particularly in the pickup line. Good catch.
So it may not stay two ways out of the lollipop, it may still go in that one direction?
Yeah.
Okay.
More to come.
Okay, thank you.
Barry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment.
Sure.
It's very clear, I hope parents are listening, talk to your kids about just being patient, you know, this is something new and I think both for parents dropping off, but also for the kids, the, they're not kids, our, our high school students, this is new and, you know, be patient, nobody's in a rush and I think that's just very important. You know, we're all going to be working through this and there may be some kinks in the first couple of days. My question is, for events in the auditorium, will there still be access like evenings and weekends where the buses are for the grandparents that used to use that area? Will we still, you know, that door won't, or that gate won't block them when, when needed or whatever?
Handicap parking.
We know...
We'll call it handicap, senior, senior citizens parking.
To get in without all the stairs in the back, right?
Yeah.
Accessible.
So yes, yes, we're, we're still going to work through that. What I described for that access was during the school day to try to make sure that we're using that gate to limit the opportunity for someone to be driving around there when a kid's not expecting someone to be there and walking across the street, to be able to do that, because we do need that. I mean, it is an important driveline for, for buses, for grounds, also for emergency vehicles to have close access to the building should we need to get, you know, an ambulance or a large fire truck or police personnel back in there, but the intent is to try to limit it. But yes, we're going to continue to provide, we know we need to provide accessible access and so we'll make those adjustments. Great. Yeah.
Excellent. Sorry, can I have one more? New access entrance at the, the athletic entrance, I'll just be honest, I was just there and I didn't notice the window over to the left. Is the intention, do you have someone there, like when we have events and stuff, too, sporting events, or is that just manned during the school day?
I think we're going to learn how we're going to use it as we go. The, the design is there for the school day function, but certainly after hours, we can explore if there's opportunities to use that for other functions or features, because now it's there.
Yeah.
We have a transaction window, right? So, but more to come on that.
But to be clear, that's not a visitor entrance, that is still at the front.
Correct.
Just so parents know.
Correct.
I'm...
Alright, I said this last year and Barry's spot on. Just please ask our community, we've got student walkers, I know people are often in a rush to get places, it's new, it's new traffic patterns, please try to take your time, give yourself enough time, especially on those first few days, as your child is maybe used to getting up a little earlier than maybe they're used to, and it may cause a little bit of stress, but don't let that creep into the drop-off. It's incredibly important that we have the time to be able to get used to the new patterns. You know, Steve and Brad have made a commitment that we're going to watch this, we're going to adjust all week long, we're going to have lots of personnel out there to make sure it goes well. If we notice something, we'll make those changes. Mr. Gillette, do you have a comment?
Thank you, yes. These maps will be sent out via the Bronco Blast as well, so parents, please look for that here on Friday. Also during our parking tag pickup, I will have paper copies, earmuffs, Dr. Fuller, for any student that might need a paper copy as a reminder for that information as well.
And what day is parking tag pickup again?
We're going to do parking tag pickup for both juniors and seniors that got the confirmation email last Friday from 1 until 3 this Friday.
Okay.
Permit parking only, yes. Nobody without a parking permit will be able to park on campus during the school day, seniors or juniors.
Wow, good stuff.
Right, it's really, it's all good stuff, lots of safety enhancements, just, you know, seeing those come to realization is really cool for our kids.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is informational reports, is there any questions on, on those, that report this week?
I have one report, anyone else?
Well, I, let me get some...
I'm sorry, information.
Informational, we'll get there next. Greatly done, Barry.
No, I missed informational reports. I thought you were asking for committee.
Next up is board committee reports, hearing nothing, no questions on informational reports. Go ahead, Barry.
The referendum construction steering committee, this is the 2020 referendum, we're still talking about it, which is good, it's all good. So we met today, it's been a while because things are winding down, which is very nice. Elementary schools and early learning center were all done. So the summer was really focused on our high school and we're near the end also, but we had some significant things that happened this summer. So Dr. Winkelman mentioned the Hart Road parking lot. It will be much safer and will have a nice smooth traffic flow and we will have to work out our kinks. The secure vestibules, the entries now for our students and visitors also are completed. There was some mechanical updates. Cafeteria, I think our students will be very pleased, we now have breakout rooms and there's a nice tech upgrade, so our cafeteria is, is done, that was a two-year kind of project. And restroom upgrades are still occurring, noting that there are two single occupancy restrooms now near the cafeteria. And then, of course, our K Lab rooms, which I'm very excited to see, I've heard about, I've seen pictures of, but in the high school, we have two new rooms for our kindergarten laboratory program. There's still some punch list items left, but we were really assured that whatever else has to happen, once school starts, there'll be no disruption to our students, they should expect a nice smooth school day, and I hope they'll be very pleased with the changes that have occurred. So we'll be meeting again in a couple of months... So, um, we'll be meeting again in a couple of months, just to wrap up one more time. But, uh, this is very exciting again, you know, on time, on budget. And, uh, we'll hear more later tonight about, um, some of the details. But, uh, we've, I think we've done a very good job with our 2020 referendum dollars and, um, I'm very happy with how things are looking.
Excellent.
So the policy committee met this morning and we had Katie admirably filling in for Diana and coming to your first policy committee meeting, right?
Yes.
So we had a very robust discussion on the policies we'll be discussing as a full board tonight. They're all, um, they're all changes to our policies because of updates to Title IX. And I think both Katie and I were very interested in discussing with you as a full board and hearing your opinions. Anything to add?
No. Yes.
More from us later.
It'll be a good discussion.
Yeah.
It's a good reminder, I was going to check in with you, Diane, to make sure you can hear everything okay.
Yes, I hear you guys. Thank you.
Great. Any other reports? Okay. All right, so with that, let's move on to our consent agenda. Um, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let me just read through what, oh, this is going to be tough. I don't know about you guys, but I'm, I'm a little slow. So we have minutes, both open and closed from our last meeting. Um, we have several finance reports that I might need help reading through what they are. Um, let me see if I've got them all pulled up here.
Would you like me to jump in?
Yes, if you can.
Yep. Wage and payroll for July. Um, also for July, the treasurer's report and revenues and expenditures for August would be the bill list. And then we have a revised personnel report.
Thank you. All right, so, um, she said, we already had a motion. Is there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari.
Yes.
Diana Clopton.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Okay, so first action item we have up, do we have a motion, um, to approve the rev, resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing $64 million school building bonds to the voters of the district at the general election to be held on the fifth day of November 2024?
So moved. Second.
All right, let's have a, a good discussion here. Not that we would have a bad one. So I think we can see here what the full, I can read it if you'd like me to. Um, this is what the, this is what would show up on the ballot. Um, maybe just for, um, I'll just read through it. Um, what the ballot would read would be, shall the Board of Education of Barrington Community Unit District Number 220, Lake, Cook, Kane and McHenry Counties, Illinois, build and equip an auditorium and an addition at the Barrington High School building. Alter, repair and equip existing buildings, included but not limiting to installing safety and security improvements, improving STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Mathematics Labs, science classrooms, fine arts classrooms and music rooms, installing energy efficient mechanical systems and replacing windows, doors and flooring, improve school sites and issue bonds of said school district to the amount of $64 million for the purpose of paying the costs thereof. Okay? So we all know what all of that means. Um, Dr. Winkelman, do you want to go through? Um, we all have in our, our, in our discussion item, we have a.
Updated drawings.
Mm-hmm. We do.
I don't think they're here in front of us, but you've got them, um, I'm not going to try to pull anything else open because I'm.
Yeah, I'm struggling too. I just actually.
So I'm having, so I'm not going to touch anything.
I just switched back to, to my hotspot, actually. Um, Dr. Fuller, would you recommend we go back to hotspots if we have them?
Okay.
All right, so.
I'm going to go to the hard copies I have in my drawer.
So, you know, my, my comments tonight, we, we've been having an ongoing conversation with the community to make sure that, um, from the very beginning, this is a community-driven plan um, that reflects the, the needs of our district, both at, some of the needs at Barrington High School as well as instructional needs throughout the district, like those middle school science classrooms that are part of the $64 million question, as well as those infrastructure and maintenance needs that, um, are ongoing. And, you know, that came up at public comments night. I think we, we heard that from the community as well. So all of those items, um, are listed. When you take those items that our community has been discussing for a year, this is the resulting question that allows us to, um, complete those projects uh, for us to be able to, um, realize some of the outcomes that we've been discussing. So, um, and I, you know, I want to take that opportunity too. I, I really appreciate the board's leadership, um, over the last year of really conducting that first step of the deep dive as part of Build 220 to really understand these areas at an in-depth level. And then really working through a process that gave lots of opportunity for this community to give input and help shape, uh, where, where we're at tonight.
As I recall, over 4,000 pieces of, of input from the, from the community. So really appreciate, um, that feedback through those phone surveys and, um, through the referendum advisory committee as well. And appreciate the board, um, you know, uh, one public comment commented on, you know, our, our option three started a year ago at 75.5 million and we, as we'll talk about through the rest of the evening, um, we were able to meet, really hone down on the needs, as I also heard in public comment, really focused on what we need. And, um, we're able to, um, make the recommendation for 64 million by reducing, moving some things out, which we'll hear about, using dollars from the 2020 referendum to accomplish some of our goals as well as, um, adjusting what the request was.
I would just like to say also that in conjunction with what Sandra and Dr. Winkelman said, that, you know, there's been a lot of community input. It's been very valuable. There were meetings and gatherings and community members a year ago and, um, and the referendum advisory committee, um, with members from different parts of our community and different interest groups and various areas, because we have so many municipalities and so many, um, you know, townships and schools in different areas and representation to get a lot of input because, you know, as a board member, I want to listen to the community and, and hear what the community says. This is about what the community is wishing for and it's, you know, it's, it's an ask and it's also a bit of work to, to help people understand what this is and what it's about. And so it's important to hear from as many members of the community as possible and get that feedback to know that we're going in the right direction as a board. So I appreciate that.
And we, we've used the same words, Eleanor and, and, uh, you know, on, on the dais up here. Um, these are needs and not wants. I think we really worked hard to, to, to try and eliminate the fact. And there wasn't a lot, because I, I think we really, our initial request, even with option three, we really honed in on what our needs were and it's communication with our, our wonderful educators and our community and just all the input that we took. And not to mention, of course, uh, the architect and, I, I mean, really, we, we just really got, we took a nice deep dive. This wasn't something that was just done spur of the moment. Um, I would like to think of this as a continuation of what we started in 2020. Um, even in 2020, we talked about the, the community auditorium and, you know, we, we didn't have a lot of ducks in a row and we didn't want to ask the community for something that we couldn't give to, we didn't, we weren't prepared to really ask for what, what was needed. So this is a continuation of 2020. Safety and security, that hasn't gone away and there's certainly more we can do. And, um, you know, once the auditorium, assuming we get support from the community, gets, um, you know, gets the green light, then the dominoes fall and there, some of the other things that we have on our list are just natural, uh, additions to, you know, uh, complement our auditorium and again, offer our students the absolute best, um, um, educational experience that we can. Um, so I'm, I am wholeheartedly in favor of this and, um, you know, the, the important thing, assuming we do pass this today, is communicating with our community why we're asking this, why, why we have these needs and, and, um, um, you know, that's more, more to come on that. But the important thing is going to be selling the next three months, the, the importance of why these are needed. These are not wants, these are needs. So, um, more to come.
Yeah, I think it's important to emphasize, um, one, thank you to, to everybody who did a survey, picked up the phone, um, attended a meeting and gave your input. Um, but a huge emphasis is that every single part of this referendum, uh, represents an instructional space, right? So these are, th- this is needed because we want to expand what we can offer our students. We want to expand the pathways we can offer them. We have such unique things now, like agriculture and it's a delight to hear kids say, oh, I was like, you know, I was such a city kid, but now I'm going into forestry because of what I learned at BHS. Uh, and, and we want to, we want to have more of that customized learning, um, and, and, uh, be able to offer, and we'll be able to offer that with some of these spaces where we can do more applied arts, more.
Right, if, I mean, in my mind, yes, it would be putting it up to 67 if we're set on, you know, spending that $6 million for, you know, and.
Would it help board if we accelerate that discussion item now so we can talk through that fully and understand the, the, the 220 final project recommendation, that referendum recommendation, before we call the, um, vote on this, on this action item we have?
Yes.
I think that'd be great, but yeah.
It's fun with me.
I can't open it, but yes.
I said I can't open it, but yes.
I already have it open, so.
I think we talked about this at the last meeting.
We did.
We did.
About some of the projects that didn't get finished or that, um, in the, in the 220 refer, the, the earlier referendums and things that, you know, time changed what our priorities were a little bit and a few things that were like, wow, we'd really like to do these things. The community did say, do major repairs, do infrastructure. And there were a couple of things that came up and we talked about it last meeting. We didn't.
We did and we do have it. I mean, we have it as a discussion item here. So I think it'd be completely appropriate if the board is willing to just let Dr. Winkelman and staff go through those slides with us before we vote.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great.
On the question here, on the referendum question. It's, in my opinion, very relevant to.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and really not, I'm not going to kill anyone, but Sarah, Sarah is taking the lead on several of those presentations. And I, I do want, she was thoughtful of how to step through them. That is the first one. So Sarah, if you don't mind coming up and just, you know, walking the board through the presentation that you have tonight on Build 220 first, let me come back to the action item, would that make sense?
Yeah. Okay. We'll just make it part of our discussion on the action item.
Okay.
And just to be clear, we're not voting on these other items. This is the only thing that we're actually voting on. These are discussion items, not votes.
Great clarification.
Yep.
This is my second item, so we're going to skip solar.
Yes, sorry.
You know what, while Sarah's signing out though, I think we do, we do need to call out though, that if we lock ourselves to 64, then effectively we are locking ourselves up to six on the final 220, build 220 item. Unless, of course, we defer.
Let's go through it and.
Unless we defer things though.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the timing has been known to the board.
Yep, agreed.
August 19th is, is our submission date. If we want to be, so I want to make sure that that's clear as well, because we've been talking about that since back in the springtime. That tonight, you know, the sequence of things. So, yeah, let's definitely, let's jump into Build 220, um, as part of the discussion.
Part of the discussion.
For the action item.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your flexibility.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah.
It's all very relevant.
Mm-hmm.
My internet just like.
Oh, good. It just came back.
I know.
Just came back.
Now it's dying again.
It's real spotty.
Yeah, mine kicked on and then it left again.
I have 85 things open now.
I have 86.
Lay it on me.
Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit, we're going to go back in time a little bit. So we're going to talk about what we talked about in May, which should be no surprise. We've talked about $6 million many times. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Do you want to put it in my show mode?
Oh, yeah, 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 sure, sure.
Yep, no worries.
I put all the presentations into one cluster, so I was.
Yep, no, makes sense.
Thank you. So the financial summary that we're looking at, you saw this in May. I echoed similar information when we met in July. So consistently, we committed 147. Of course, everybody knows that. We've spent a good chunk of it. We have a lot that's still working over the summer, leaving us about $6 million, which is inclusive of $3 million in savings from the 147 million, as well as $3 million in interest earnings.
Can you just pause there for a second? Does anybody have a question on that slide and that, where we are? I don't, I think not, but I just want to make sure that we're all clear where we are.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to skip ahead quickly here to talk about sort of where we are right now with the dollars, since that's sort of the topic of conversation. So we are still working through our $18 million of spending for the summer. When we met last, I said we're about halfway through construction and we've spent about half of our contingency. We're now a little bit further. We've spent about 75% of it, so we have about 250,000 left. We do anticipate to spend some more of that over the next couple of months as we work through the remaining projects. So we're still feeling confident about the $6 million and likely very little will be left over from the contingency.
And Sarah, I would say, don't skip through it. Go through the, your slides. I mean, not, we've had the privilege of seeing, of seeing what you're going to present, but I think it'd be great for everybody to hear.
Oh, I was going to go back, I'm sorry. I was thinking I, I should have had this one next, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm actually going to let Nicole talk a little bit about some of the work that she's done. And I wanted to start with saying that it's been so amazing for me over the last couple of months to spend time with Nicole and watch the work that she's doing and the passion that she has for everything she's doing. So thank you for your, um, teaching me a lot of the things that you do and thank you for all of the really, really hard work that you've done so far.
I really, I actually love what I do here for it, so, you know, I, I, it's a lot of work. It's sometimes crazy busy, but I really do love the work that I do and I love the opportunity, the board and Barrington, that it gives you, you're part of all these projects. So I'll go through some of the things that we've done.
Excellent.
And you remember, I'll go back a little bit in time too, when I very first started. My actual very first meeting with the board when I started here was picking the referendum objectives for Build 220. That was my introduction to the board and the district and that was my very first meeting. So, um, the projects we're going to go over here are actually going back to that time. All the objectives we had for all of the schools are listed here. Now, there's a lot more detail and there's a lot more minutia we could get into here, but so these are very high level. But just to kind of give you an idea of some of the things that we've accomplished from the originally objectives that we've sent out, set out early in the beginning. Um, we've put in digital phone systems at all of the schools. Right now we're looking at the elementary schools, but we put, um, sensory rooms in all of our elementary schools. We've put STEM rooms in all of those spaces. We eliminated mobile classrooms, which was a security improvement for us at Grove Avenue Elementary. Um, we put a new classroom in at Countryside. We have an addition at Puff. Uh, we put a new playground in at Sunny Hill. Um, we've got lots of repairs and maintenance, mechanical upgrades, lots of different things, lighting throughout the building and safety and security improvements throughout all of that. So we, these are all those original objectives we accomplished at all of our elementary schools. It's a lot of work. Moving on to our middle schools, you, you see some of the similar projects because we have similar objectives for our whole district. So still the digital phone system, eliminating those mobile classrooms at both Station and Prairie, leading to the new classroom additions and still repairs and maintenance, you know, the infrastructure, mechanical upgrades and safety and security equipment. So all of that has been accomplished at the middle schools as well.
I just want to clap after our slide. It's so amazing.
For sure.
There's so many great things in our building now thanks to this referendum. So. So, high school, we have all of those same things we talked about, we have the digital phone system, safety and security improvements, the mechanical upgrades, infrastructure repairs and maintenance, but we've done some other things there, some of what was talked about earlier by Barry in our referendum committee update, we've got our athletic and P E wellness facilities, cafeteria renovation, we've got these great culinary arts labs, our atrium addition, parking lots, and of course, we've done the architectural design for the fine arts, for the new fine arts center that we talked about in the other referendum, so there's a lot of projects here, we have accomplished a lot over these two years, but what we really want to show you here is we've accomplished all those original objectives from, from the referendum and Bill 220 over these two years.
Yay.
So, to Steve's point, the two projects that we have discussed over the last month or so is the BHS plumbing, which was originally designated to be in the upcoming referendum, as well as the main gym air conditioning, which was a new project that we had discussed in Bill 220 and is kind of coming back to you, so I can let Nicole talk a little bit about what's the timeline if you were to approve these projects moving forward.
So the design phase for each of these projects would be very similar, about three months each, but they, you have different lead times for equipment and preparing for those projects, so high school plumbing, well, the design phase is only three months and we would have some midtime after that, lead time for materials would actually allow us to do this work in the summer of 2025 if we were to move forward with it, so we could move pretty quickly on that one. The main gym air conditioning, design time is still very similar, but lead time for mechanical equipment is very long, so that project we would be able to complete until the summer of 2026.
That's a part.
We figured you would have that response, we talked about you as we were putting this together, so we will have fans at middle school recognition for a few more years.
And just to be clear, it would be too disruptive to like do it in the spring of 2026, to have it done by summer of 2026, really, you have to wait till the school's empty to really get the work done, right?
You really do, yeah, yeah, we would make that gym kind of unused during the school year, so you don't want to take that out of service for the students.
Especially with the amount of equipment that would be overhead in order to install the air conditioning, you want to have them out.
That's why it's a year later.
Right. Instead of just, yeah, a year.
And while we did meet the objective of having an air conditioned, physical education space, I think overwhelmingly, the community and, and the board is, would like to consider this main gym air conditioning in addition to what we've already done, the objective we've already met.
So at our last meeting, we talked about plumbing at length, right? And sometimes a picture tells a thousand words, so I actually asked Nicole, she obliged-
I was watching this go down.
Oh boy, she was love.
Whoa.
I don't want to touch this thing because it's part of the plumbing-
I know, should we be breathing that?
This is not, I didn't just like go, this is part of our real plumbing system.
No flushing at the high school right now.
Is there, in there that's alive?
Yeah.
No. So, we talked though about like coming soon to you, the plumbing system at the high school. You may recall, it, it was one of the first projects, so when we bid all of the high school work, right, that took several years to complete, we actually did a first bid immediately after the la, the referendum passed, where we knew we had to work on the system, so I said, you know, I think I didn't do a great job of just describing the need, so I thought, this is an example of the plumbing system, where you can see even at some of the junctions where the pipes come together, these are the types of things that we are right now, when we talk about ongoing annual maintenance, this is the stuff that's getting replaced, patched and repaired throughout, but we're talking about with the plumbing system is actually instead of just continuing to patch a problem, replace and resolve the problem, so that's just one example of deterioration that occurs over time naturally, and so we have lots of examples, she actually had a much larger pipe that she provided, which I wasn't going to put in here, but-
And this is both in, input pipes as well as pipes going out, so there's a lot of leakage and a lot of loss, a lot of cost and-
Well, in, in the winter of 2021, was it, wasn't that primarily the waste system? I don't know if our community wants the details, but wasn't that the primarily, that we overdid?
That was probably already out.
Overall of that system.
Home station.
We did, we did ejector pump, which is basically a giant pump for the sanitary system for the whole building, it was, I think, one of two still functioning systems of that type, so we did, we did do that part of this referendum.
I described it as deterioration, Nicole, is there anything else you want to kind of describe with the condition of that pipe and why it's at the condition it is, because I'm not answering that, I'm going to leave it to the expert.
What's the chunky stuff inside, is that-
You don't want to know, you do not want to know.
It wasn't alive.
It's actually sediment that builds up over time in the pipes and we do treat the water in our mechanical systems to prevent that from happening, but you can't prevent all of it, and our, our piping is so old that it, you can't stop all of that from happening and that's why you see that erosion, you see that hole in there, it may look like a small hole, but that hole can actually flood an entire room.
Wow.
That's how much water is going through those pipes and how much it matters to make those repairs and get those things fixed, and as that, that sediment builds up in there, like you can, you thought something was alive in the pipe? It kind of did, I'm not lying. It's filled up inside of the pipe that will cause the erosion and that pipe to wear away and could eventually clog the pipes and cause backup, so there's a lot of problems that can occur if you're not taking care of it properly.
So the new system that you're proposing to put in addresses, obviously not makes it work over time, but a longer lifespan or just better-
Some, some of our piping is too old and the material is improper at this point, so we would be replacing it with new material, but just the age of the pipes alone requires, it necessitates that it is time to replace it.
So we would replace them, reading what our description was, the steel and black pipe.
Or orange.
Yep.
Well, that's-
Or multicolor.
That's referring to the material, right, that pipe is made of.
So, I mean, I do that, you know, it was kind of fun to have that item, but I think it helps illustrate when we talk about wants and needs, the, the need for a more permanent solution and it's a large dollar amount, but we are doing that work annually, but it does require a commitment to actually replace the plumbing system.
Yeah, and if we were to do that in one summer, it would mean we could do nothing else.
Nothing else.
Right, so it's important to put these bulkier maintenance items on a referendum because that's how they're going to get accomplished, even if we do increase, potentially increase that budget on an annual basis.
Right. Nicole, can you remind me, what is the price tag for plumbing again?
Four and a half million.
And then on the AC side, I think it was like three, is that right? Because we had a grant for Harvard.
Yes, it was 3.3, I believe.
3.3, okay. So I guess here's another question then, with regards to plumbing, have we had any, I, I understand it's about, you know, making sure nothing drastic happens, but have we had any catastrophic things happen besides what Barry just mentioned in 2021?
I mean, that, that is part of maintenance, the longer that you let something go without replacing it, your maintenance crease, your maintenance cost will increase, and I think we presented that to the board before, right, your increased-
Sure.
-deferred maintenance over time, so we, we have had other issues, that is definitely not the only one, it was just a very visible one, easy, small, you know, portable piece, but we, we, we are constantly maintaining our buildings, right, and we have had other leaks, we've put clamps on them, we, we replace sections of pipe at a time.
Yeah.
But as we discussed in, in a previous meeting with the board as well, this is a project, Sandra's point, that would take up all of our summer capital if we had to do it, and it is a project that makes sense to do all at one time because replacing part of the plumbing and leaving part of the old will put too much pressure on the old plumbing
Sure.
and could cause more catastrophic failure, so you do want to do this entire project at one time.
Okay, so I do understand there have been, you know, issues, but nothing that's shut down the high school, correct?
Anytime we have an issue, we do our very best to be as minimally disruptive to students as possible if we have to shut down an area. At any school, all of our building administrators are very good about maybe relocating students if we need to and keeping school running each day, but there, there definitely have been issues at the high school where we have had to make repairs and maybe move students or-
Okay.
-move a function.
Okay, well, that's good to understand, and then, and I'm sorry, you did mention this, I don't recall the answer though, do you recall approximately how much we spend each year maintaining the plumbing system?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head, that's something I would need to get back to you guys on.
Okay.
How long would the plumbing system last with a full replacement?
Oh, yeah.
With a replacement.
Well, some of this plumbing is original to the building, so it, it can last decades by the, if we replace it, the plumbing at this, we would not come back and try to replace it in 10 or 20 years, we're talking more like 30, 40 years before we can start replacing anything.
So it's a reasonable, useful life.
And we may not have had a building shut down at the high school yet, but of course, the longer we wait, the more likely that possibility is.
You're saying this is original to the high school, right?
Yeah, some of it is, yes.
Some of it, yeah. It's a, it's a bit of a ticking time bomb too.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on the projects? Anything else we need to talk about with air conditioning?
I mean, just the timeline, obviously.
Yeah, timeline.
You want it in the next one, right?
And nothing you need to worry about, but I assume that will disrupt summer camps and stuff too, and that'll just be something you deal with at the time. Yes. Correct. And, and a project like the plumbing, even we were discussing that doing that next summer would likely mean that we're not doing summer school at the high school again and would be relocating that to a middle school for another year, but we could still run camps the way that we likely have this year or we can relocate anything that would have been in that space.
The good news is, at this point, we're good at it. We've done it a couple times.
It's true.
True.
So what's next? We'll continue to work on the Bill 220 projects that we have in place that will continue throughout this summer and into the fall. We will continue to work with PMA on our arbitrage for our interest, we again, won't know exactly what that number is until we've spent all of our Bill 220 bonds, however, I've talked with PMA several times, they're feeling very confident about the $3 million, so that's not a concern we have, and then our next question was going to be whether or not we had the board's support to move forward with the design work on the plumbing and the AC in the gym.
So, I'm sorry, real quick question on that too, so when you do the design work, there's a certain amount that comes out, but the, but the actual, you know, the bulk of the cost is probably when construction starts, I'm sorry, let me go back to that slide, so it was six months, is that right, for materials and the like for plumbing and a year for the AC? I mean, so realistically, that money isn't going to be spent for probably another year, six, six months a year, the bulk of it at least, is that fair?
Yes, we will have some costs, of course, for the design, as you mentioned.
Sure, of course.
And then, you know, once we go out to bid and that will come to the board, of course, we will award the bid and then once the materials are purchased, we have the commitment to move forward.
So with the commitment, right.
So are you, are you-
I'm thinking cash, I'm thinking cash flow, so cash flow would occur when the project's actually completed in the summer of '26 and the summer of '25, is that correct?
The largest portions, but we are paying throughout the projects.
Like progress payments, that kind of thing? Okay.
And is there a time limit on using 2020 referendum dollars?
That's a great question, Barry, so we, I've worked with PMA very closely on that, since we have such a small amount left, there are options for us to put the funds into government accounts which prevent us from losing any of the funds by not spending them on time, so we are in great shape right now.
Excellent. And so it's this, these two projects represent the $3 million that we have left, we looked at everything we talked about, added up to 144 million, and then at the $3 million that we gratefully earned in interest, right, as well as an additional $2 million that we set aside a few board meetings ago to enable completing large projects at this, at this juncture, so I just wanted to remind the board that that's, that's where we are here with, with these two projects and how we got there.
Yes.
Right. Go ahead.
Remaining Bill 220 funds, the $3 million in interest earnings and the set aside $2 million.
Was it $2 million or 1.8?
Two.
It was exactly two, okay.
So I'm going to circle back to your question, Steve, you asked if the board was interested in moving forward with these two projects or considering an abatement to the 2020 referendum, so I want to make sure we cover that question and ask board members if they, what, what their preference is, I guess it's A or B, we are either going to spend the dollars on, on these two programs or we would consider an abatement. I want your thoughts.
Well, even if we abated like 3 million, we're talking, what, maybe a $10 rebate per household or something?
Did you guys calculate that? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't think it's quite $10, but I don't, but to your point, I don't think it's, you know, $200.
And what would the factor be if we abated the three but then added it to the referendum? I mean, where, so then what do we, what do we-
What's a wash?
It's a wash, or, you know, and I think this is where Barry and I come in as your finance committee representatives, you know, can we work with administration to figure out how we can fund this separately, and I know this is another topic that we have on our agenda, but I mean, you know, the, you know, I think it was, I can't remember if it was Ellen or, or if it was Ms. Turk here who mentioned this, it was Ms. Turk, I mean, she mentioned this and I, and I agree, you know, we do, we have talked about the need to have standard maintenance be part of our budget, and so, you know, as your finance committee representatives, I do think it's incumbent upon Barry and I to work with administration to figure out how we can, you know, not in five years, how to do this, but today, or as soon as possible, right? And so if we, you know, I'm just, I'm just doing the math, that's why I clarified with you what the funds set aside were, so if it's 2 million and we have four and a half million already committed to plumbing, that leaves us with, you know, plus or minus 1.5 to 1.2 million that we need to raise, I don't think that's unreasonable to, you know, have us figure out as a board over the next 12 months, especially since the majority of this money won't even be spent until 2025 at the earliest, like a year from now.
So your proposal, let me make sure I understand.
Yeah, please.
So you would like to consider abating back 3 million?
It could be one and a half.
One and a half million, and then finding that one and a half in, in our operating budget over the next several years.
Well, most likely it would have to be the next 12 to 18 months, based on the timeline.
Would that delay the, for instance, the AC for the gym then?
No.
If we had to raise it?
No, because if I'm, again, if I'm hearing correctly, if this business runs the same way, you know, I've run my businesses, you do make progress payments, you do have, you know, design dollars are spent, but for a, you know, I would imagine for a $3.3 million project, I would say greater than 65% of it's going to be spent when the project's done. Yeah. So, I mean, that gives us pretty good time and I think that it actually holds us accountable as a board too, not only providing a good gesture to our community, but also holding us accountable for truly reducing the budget as most of us said we would when we were elected.
So you're proposing like a 1.5 million dollar abatement?
That's correct.
What would that actually mean per household, we don't know, right?
I don't think we do.
Well, we can actually try to calculate it quickly just based upon the, the 64 million being 236, 236 dollars per year, somebody wants to do that, may I?
Well, but I guess my point is it's not the dollar amount, it's the gesture, it's the fact that we've found this million and a half and-
Yeah.
And, and the reality is we found $3 million, right? Nothing any of us did, you generated that interest.
I will jump in, I've tried to be quiet, I don't want us, I don't want to take any steps that diminish the hard work of-
Of course not, absolutely not.
It has not found 3 million, it's excellent leadership and stewardship over four years, touching every building and 147 million dollar project, so I was trying to just let the conversation go, but I have to jump in because that comment kind of diminishes the work of the team.
You know what, I apologize.
Steve, I don't want the community to hear that, that was just-
You're absolutely right.
-good luck or happenstance, it's really good working with our construction managers and our architects and the leadership.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes, I appreciate you stepping in.
Well, I think the timing of the bond issuance was something we looked at carefully, that we were advised by our administrative staff, that things, you know, having been on the finance committee for a period of time, things change and the, and the, the economy of the country has not been stable for the past 10 years, things have, have ebbed and flowed, and to pay attention and know when was a good time to issue the bonds and when was time to wait or to do a little sooner so that we would make a fiscally responsible decision for the money of our community was a, was a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dave Biden's not here, but his timing was, was, I mean, maybe it was luck, but he, he, you know, he foresaw that we needed to get the biggest tranche earlier when the interest rates were low and now we're-
We're reaping the benefits of the interest that we've earned and it's a savings to the community as well that, that we're paying less in the- in the cost of selling the bonds. Also, I, I just want to make a point about committing to a project without the funds identified. You know, if we're saying that we're going to start a project with the assumption that we're going to find the savings, does leave me feeling a little unsettled.
Sure.
Yeah, that's not a responsible thing to do.
I'm all for wanting to give back and wanting to cut our expenses. I really agree with you there. In my personal opinion, the referendum was voted on and it passed, and we were discharged with spending that money and maintaining our facilities and, and going within the bonds of the referendum question, which we all, and air conditioning was actually part of the original discussion, as is building maintenance. In my opinion, I feel the community would support us using that money towards the projects that was already voted on and agreed to. And I would agree with you that I think moving forward, we do need to try to find ways to cut costs and find the money in order to put more towards maintenance of our buildings, so we don't get into this issue with another referendum question, and we're not having to put those projects on the thing. I got to be honest, as we've all said, putting me on facilities, the amount of projects we still have left to get through is alarming to me. And I would be hesitant to give, and I'm not saying five dollars or whatever, but I, I don't know that it's enough. I think the gesture to the community would be going forward, figuring out a way to maintain our buildings and have a bigger budget towards that, so that we don't have to come back with these questions every five years, ten years, twenty years.
And to piggyback on that, to piggyback on that, I think to start our discussion about maintenance, I don't want to start two million in the hole that we're going to start our maintenance discussion, but the first two million goes towards the air conditioning when we have so many other needs and we have the funds to do it. So I, I think, you know, let, let's do the big projects and then have the big discussion about, the tougher discussion about how we can maintain this for the next ten years fiscally responsibly.
Next, twenty years.
Twenty years, whatever, yeah.
And I would add on to all of that that was said, and Steve, I completely agree with you, and I think that another way to show the community that we are concerned about that, we are being fiscally responsible, is the reduction we've already made. We started out with a referendum request at seventy-five point five million. That was going to be at two hundred and eighty-nine dollars per year for a five hundred thousand dollar house, and we've lowered that now to sixty-four million and only two hundred and thirty-six. So in fact, you know, it's wherever you place the money, we, not abating right now and allowing the team to focus on what we, what we've already planned to do and have that reduction in, in the motion that we have on the table is showing our fiscal responsibility, too. And it's giving them back that, that dollars in a different way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to split hairs and say that the work that's been done isn't amazing, don't get me wrong. I guess, the way I see this, quite frankly, is that, yes, we've reduced it from seventy-five point five. It's still probably seventy million dollars, though. We're just, we're just pointing to referendums sixty-four. The other six is being spent here.
Right, but we're not asking for that six in addition. We already have that six. We've already, we asked for that in 2020. The community graciously granted us that.
Correct.
And we're spending it in the, in the, to meet the objectives and the purpose of, of what we set out to do in 2020.
Well, and maybe, Craig, you can help me, I'm sorry, Dr. Lincoln, you could help me with a better way of saying this, but the three million dollars in interest, yes, it is due to, you know, sound investments, agreed there. Is it fair to say that it's not budgeted? Because we didn't anticipate it, right? That's, that's, that's the point I'm coming to.
Yeah, it's hard, because we're, we're at the finish line and we're trying to make some decisions, but along the way, we made a lot of decisions of how to accomplish these objectives. I think what's in front of you tonight is another opportunity to maybe go, go back and do a couple of projects that along the way, we had to make some tough decisions, and that's, that, that's the hard part.
Sure. Yeah, you know, I guess what I'll say is I'll, I will acquiesce to the board, because, you know, we do make decisions as a, as a team. You've heard my suggestion. I appreciate you listening.
I, I appreciate you raising it, honestly.
Yeah.
And make sure that we look at things very holistically and we don't just, you know, move forward without, without great thought. So I really appreciate you bringing it up. I really do.
And I think it's, it's good to, when you see, when we see opportunities to abate, and if it makes sense, I think that we should discuss it, and, you know, the last couple of years, we didn't issue D sub, and that was what-
Two and a half million?
Two and a half million dollar savings to the community, so I think to continue to look for those savings for our taxpayers is, it's, it's good stewardship, so.
Absolutely.
And, and Steve, I think the same thing. I, I believe your, the thought of, you know, the community and the goodwill and so forth, coupled with Katie's comment about, let's keep doing that work, you know, I think you have a commitment from the administration. We've heard that of the board, of the need, based on the community feedback, of making sure we are protecting our assets and allocating those dollars. But I do like Sarah's thought of, let's do that in a way that we can budget and plan for it and know where the money's coming from, then come, you know, coming up with a one and a half or two million dollar amount without having identified how we're going to do that puts us in a little precarious spot, I think. And so I'd rather do it in the order of, we've identified the savings, now we can have that conversation and make that decision. So we're committed to do that.
Yeah, okay.
So thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
Let me ask this question. Is the board okay, then, moving forward with the projects to complete the 2020 referendum dollars with, with the VHS plumbing and the VHS main gym air conditioning? Looking for some thumbs up, because this isn't an action, but we're giving the administration direction to continue to move forward as we have been discussing on these two amazing projects that not only reduce the cost to the taxpayers and a potential referendum for 2024, but also accomplish more of what we set out to do in 2020.
Should we ask Diana for her thumbs up?
Oh.
Yeah, Diana, do you have a thumb up there? Thank you.
Yes, my thumb is up, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. We will start working on the design for both of these projects, and of course, the bidding for this will go to the facilities committee and then to the full board for approval, so we will keep you up to date on the progress of these. Awesome, thank you.
Before you leave, maybe?
Yeah, I was going to say, so.
Two things, right.
I got this, so I'm going to do this next, so if you have any-
It's not the pipe, I don't think it is.
Do you want to go back to the action item?
I was going to go back to the action item, but if you just stay there for a moment?
Okay.
Can we do that quickly?
Yep, yep.
Go back to the action item, and are we ready, board, for a roll call to close out this, this conversation?
Yes.
And again, it's the action item on the referendum.
Action item on the, on the floor here is to, can we flip back to that one quickly, or no?
The red, the red slide.
The red slide that shows the, the, what would be on the ballot. So I'll just read the action item. That's, it's a resolution to provide and require the submission of the proposition of issuing a sixty-four million dollar school building bond to the voters of the district at the general election to be held on the fifth day of November, and it would read as I've read earlier in red here. Everybody can see it. Do I need to read through it again? Board? Okay, are we ready? Roll call, please.
Barry Altshuler?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yeah.
All right, motion passes. We have, we have a lot of work to do, but before we get to that work, maybe we're going to have a little fun.
Yeah, so, just a couple of thoughts. Again, I really, I want to compliment the board on tremendous work for over a year to try to really work through this to arrive at a referendum question. Very proud of the work of the board. So now that we've voted and we're going to go forward, we now enter information phase. I did share in my weekly a multi-page draft of what that information campaign would consist of to make sure, you know, we've had lots of opportunities in the community. We've been having engagement, but I think it's important that we really make sure between now and November, everyone in the, the community has an opportunity in lots of different ways to have the information so that they can make an informed decision, right? So, in the background, we have prepared, so starting tomorrow, we will launch all the updates on the Barrington 220 website under the referendum. Updates that you will see are things that have been brought up along the way at the board table, at referendum advisory committee and administrative discussion. So for the benefit of the board and the community, we will have some frequently asked questions that will be available around this information campaign for the referendum. We are going to have voter information on that website. We will list the community meeting dates, where there'll be opportunities to come and learn more and tour the spaces. There will be a opportunity to submit a question. So Dr. Carpenter and Samantha have agreed, we've used this feature in the past where you can actually click on a tab right on the website. If you have a thought and you can't find the resources, that you can submit a question and we will get back to the community. We will put a tax calculator on the website, so if you have questions around what would the impact based on my household? Because we've kind of used that five hundred thousand, but this will give people more flexibility to really think about what does it mean for my household and the annual tax impact. Samantha, what else am I forgetting? Anything else noteworthy that'll be on the website?
Do you still also keep up all of the information from the past six months?
Okay. And then what-
Can you just repeat that, because I don't think everybody can hear it? So keep up the website from the referendum advisory committee will still be maintained.
And then the, the website, I just rattle off a bunch of things that'll exist immediately. We're going to continue to update throughout the process, those FAQs or any other resources that people are asking about, we're going to make it available. And then, you know, the last piece is, at the next board meeting, the team will come up and they'll kind of give an overview of what that information phase will look like and give the board an opportunity to also inform if there's some things that you're excited about and want us to do, or make sure we do, or do more of, or if there's other suggestions that maybe you don't hear that you think may be beneficial, so that'll be an opportunity to do that. You have the draft version. It's pretty comprehensive, but that'll be at the next meeting now that the vote has occurred.
May I ask one thing, sir, board? So, board, as you know, right, we need to watch our Open Meetings Act and abide by it, so each of these opportunities for the different PTO meetings, for the different information sessions, we'll want to make sure that we know who's going where, so maybe if we could ask the question, maybe put, what are those called? A survey or whatever, so we can sign up for when we're going and we can see who's going to be attending so that we don't have to burden you with keeping track of all that. Maybe give us a place to put all that in a Google Doc or something?
I can use a doodle, so you can all see it.
Okay, perfect. We don't have to solve it here, but just some way we can all see who's going to what, so we make sure we keep in accordance with Open Meetings Act. That'd be great.
Okay, awesome. Again, want to compliment the team. Lot of hard work getting ready. We want to make information available for our community, so that'll, that'll start immediately. All right, I, I don't, I had a plumbing pipe. I don't have an air conditioner unit under the table.
Do you have anything else?
That is not down here. What I do have is a gift, and Nicole's going to kill me, but she loves attention, but on behalf of the administration and our Board of Education, we would like to present to you.
You are awesome.
I think you might just want to open it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you kind of have to.
Yeah. Great expense.
So, Nicole, thank you for all of your dedication, hard work, and leadership, so we wanted to present with the first Golden Hard Hat Award issued by the Board of Education. Officially, thank you for all of you.
Thank you, everybody. I obviously didn't know this was happening. I did mean it earlier when I said I really value the opportunity that I've had of what I've been able to do in this district and what I've been able to do for the schools and the students, and the opportunity that the board and the community has afforded me here. It's been amazing, and I love the work that I've done, so I really appreciate your gratitude as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can do a photo.
Yes.
Little opportunity stretch and stand up. Stand up. Maybe for-
Is it out again?
That is true gold, right?
Yeah, you're right. You know what, you're right. It's got doll. It's not by Arsenal.
Wait, can she wear it for one of her photos?
She wears it every day.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
You want to slip there? All right.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Nicole. All right, now let me see if I can figure out, I think we've got one more action item.
We do.
So I'm going back to action items. So do we have a motion to approve the amended Board of Education meeting date calendar? So moved.
Second.
Okay, the only change that we see on here is movement of the November fourth planned meeting to be November sixth. So we had moved it off of the election night already, but felt it was most appropriate to move it to Wednesday.
Right.
The school's closed on Monday.
That way we can actually maybe have the results of what we just, of our last action item, too.
Oh, yeah.
And be able to discuss that as well.
Good point.
Very good point.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. We ready to do roll call?
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Diana Clopton? Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, so please note that change, and we'll, of course, send out our meeting notices as we typically do in advance, but note that that meeting will be on a Wednesday night, the first Wednesday of November. Okay, so let's move to our discussion items.
All right.
Do you want us to relocate while you do policy?
Do you want to continue with the summer project?
Or do you want to?
They're already up here, just for efficiency. Do you want to wait?
Also really wants it to be her turn.
In fairness, I looked at her, and so she started covering up, so. But do we want to just continue with the items that-
Might as well.
Because Sarah and Nicole are going to present on the other ones. Is it okay if we just- If the board is okay, we'll continue, we'll go out of order, and we'll continue with the financial related. So next up would be our solar update.
Yeah, I had, I had to re-log in again.
I mean, we are talking about a lot of exciting things tonight, but I know this one you guys have been dying to put a bow on. So have we. We're very excited about it. So we kept the sunshine theme for our presentation as our last one for a while. So we're going to talk a little bit about where did we start, where did we go, what is our recommendation, and what is next? So of course, we're always keeping our mission statement at the forefront of our mind, and the exciting thing about solar is that it really does touch a lot of our strategic priorities. But specifically, it's going to be our stewardship, which we have an identified objective for our environment, environmental sustainability, which is to develop and implement the district's plan for sustainability to be good stewards of environmental resources, including sustainable activities. So solar would be part of that. One of the exciting things about this, which you might remember from the last time we've talked about this, is that our proposal will also includes an integration into our classrooms, so we're very excited about that piece, which is why I said it touches more than just the stewardship objective and priority. So- our ability to receive the incentives and the rebates, but still is looking bright. So as I mentioned, we embarked on the design build process. So here's a little timeline of what that looked like and how it went. In April, we published an intent to solicit our proposals. It was issued in May. We had a mandatory project meeting in June. Proposals were due on June 20th. We received two, one from Nell Net and one from Performance Services. We notified our shortlisters about a week later after we had an opportunity to review the proposals. We then had interviews with both of our proposers and we shared this on July 22nd with our facility committee meeting. What I'll mention is there is a memo attached to that facility committee meeting with a lot more detail on the design build process. We're happy to answer any questions, but that has a really nice recap for you if you'd like to take a look at that. So the design build process, I'm going to liken it to our food service proposal. So that was kind of new to us where we were putting out a proposal, not specifically looking for the lowest price, but we were looking for a partner that could meet our needs. So the design build process is very similar to that. While price is certainly a component, as it always is, being good financial stewards, but we wanted to make sure that the partner that we selected had experience similar to our projects. We want somebody that worked in K-12 schools. We want somebody that was familiar with the regional office of education and their requirements. We wanted somebody that had done design build in the past and knew the construction and project management process. We're also looking for somebody that has quality organization and commitment within their team. It's important in the design build process that they have a licensed architect, so that was something that our proposer needed to have. Financial capability, what are their financials like? Are they in a good financial position to support the work that we need? And what is the timeliness and references of the past work that they've done? We want somebody that has a quality reputation and that we can point to and say we've spoken to people that have worked with them in the past. And then are their utilization goals compliant with the Illinois Human Rights Act, specifically related to working with women, minority businesses? And then what does the collaboration and integration look like between our partner and the district and the innovation? And that's specifically talking about the integration in the classroom, which was important to us as well. As I mentioned, we are proposing to move forward with the high school and both middle schools. I also provided a financial analysis for you, which would look similar to what we shared with you about a year ago. And I just want to mention that the assumptions that we're using on the analysis that you're seeing are very, they're consistent with what we showed you in the past. So our electric cost inflation, we kept the same. Our degradation, solar soillage, that's something important that we need to keep in mind. You know, we can't expect full sun all of the time. We can't expect them to be clean all the time and we've taken that into consideration as we're planning out our usage. So you have that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. It's also updated with the proposal, the proposed costs, as well as the proposed rebates and incentives. Part of the design build process is that the district has an opportunity to negotiate with our proposer on the prices, which of course will directly impact the incentives and rebates. But I wanted to let you know that those dollar values are included in this analysis that we've done for you. So again, we are coming to you with a recommendation of using Performance Services. We believe that they will be a quality partner to us. We believe that we will have the commitment from them. They have a great past reputation. They've worked on projects the same size as ours, some larger, but they have a lot of experience with K-12, which is great. We are recommending an ownership model. Of course, I mentioned the three schools and then I have the initial investment and rebates for the proposal listed here with a payoff year of year 10. We've talked a lot about funding options in the past. I left all of these on here as they're mentioned in the memo that was shared with the facilities committee. I think we've most recently been discussing using capital projects fund, but I wanted to still give you the option for working cash fund, which we could do a transfer for about $1.4 million to offset the cost. Operating budget, which would of course include cost-saving options or borrowing DCEV. So what are the next steps? Again, we went to the facilities committee to get support to move forward to today in July, so we're here for you August. September, we will come back to you on the 5th with a final contract after we've had an opportunity to negotiate with Performance Services. And as Dr. Bynne mentioned when we were together last time, the contract is actually part of the proposal documents that we put out. So our attorneys have reviewed those. We're all very comfortable with the contract terms and conditions, so we'd be coming back to you to approve a signed copy of that. And also, we will be working on the SREC application in the meantime. Once everything's signed and approved, we'll move forward with final design in the fall. And then again, December 2024 is important for us to get started to maximize our rebates and incentives. And then our project will be complete next summer. More questions can I answer?
So Performance Services, looks like they can get it started by November, December, right? They're permitted to that?
They absolutely can and actually our representative, the audience.
Yes, hi. Absolutely. You are not the only one that is rushing to hit the December 30th, let's call it, deadline. The high school is the, all right, the high school is the main building that we really want to get the incentives going. Sorry.
The high school is the main building because that's over a megawatt. Anything under at the two elementaries, you're going to automatically qualify for the 30% tax credit. So we just want to make sure that everything would be in line.
And are all the roofs on those buildings already ready for installation or is there work that has to be done?
That is a great question. We have gone through many discussions. I do know that they have been redone, but we still need to hire and would hire after approval, structural engineering to do a complete analysis and make sure. And part of the, part of the next phase is the back and forth between structural engineering and the racking manufacturer and moving and making sure that we have a preliminary design. We think it's solid, but obviously we have a full design that would still need to happen. We also need an electrical engineer to okay everything and check all of that.
And the second part of that, because I know Katie, you're so good on the facilities committee now. In terms of the maintenance of those roofs, part of the initial analysis that we did throughout the past two years on all of the roofing throughout all of our buildings, that's why we need to find the middle schools and high schools, because those roofs are the most appropriate to install solar at this point. So that in terms of maintenance, it is the right time to use, to install solar on those roofs.
Correct.
So I know you've worked with a lot of K through 12 schools before and I think in terms of tracking, because we talked early on about potential educational or learning component, is that mostly through websites that students could track solar production or how would some of, how would some of that educational component work?
Yeah, so we've actually partnered with an organization called NEED. It's a national organization and they do solar-focused curriculum throughout the district. Now, it's not for every building, it's not for every student, but definitely in the, in the high school, you would want to bring in some AP or some science or maybe you've already, you know, started a solar program. The industry is growing so quickly that there are a lot of job opportunities in that. And so along with coming directly into the classroom, which you guys will be able to customize yourself, there's also opportunity and through the inverters that we use to get things kind of portrayed throughout the district on monitors and things like that. So people can kind of see what the solar is doing all the time. You might have access to more things than the community in terms of what, you can actually look all the way down to a single or two-panel level. That's how, that's how crazy the technology's gotten. It may be a little too much for everybody, but the technology's-
There's a very cool dashboard that we saw in the interview that Performance Services provides that we could put on our website so people could be tracking.
That would be great. So you could track in real time.
Absolutely. Yeah, you'll know when a cloud comes over because you'll see it drop and then the spike happens as soon as the sun's back.
What's the life expectancy after the 10-year payoff?
Well, the panels themselves are going to last 50, 60, 70 years. The technology hasn't changed. What's changed is obviously the wattages have really increased, how they produce them, how fast they produce them. That has changed. But the truth is, once you, once you put the panels on, it's almost set it and forget it, you can kind of leave them. There is an opportunity in the future potentially to upgrade the panel wattage size, but in terms of the residual income will be offsetting your utility bills far into the future. Now, we did put in a, we know they're not going to produce the same level as they do in the beginning 20, 30 years from now, but that's already taking into account into the model that we showed the district.
Yeah, we have an assumption in there for the degradation. And as we were evaluating the proposals and looking at the prior proposal for Performance Services, we said, how is it smaller and it's producing more? Well, technology is changing every day, so that was kind of a cool item that we were able to identify.
Yes.
All right.
And just to be clear for our community, it's just not financially viable to do the elementary schools, right? The, the payback wouldn't be worthwhile for the money that we'd be putting out. Is that correct?
Not at this time. That doesn't mean it won't be in the future. And that, that goes back to the analysis we've done over the past couple of years, based on the life expectancy of those existing roofs, as well as a pitched roof is more expensive to install a solar system on. And the majority of roofing on our elementary schools are pitched roofs. So it does make a difference. That doesn't mean in the future it won't be a viable option, just right at this time it's the most viable at the middle schools and high school.
Do you have an estimate as to what the potential liability would be though? If we do need to do some maintenance or additional work on the, on the roofs for the two middle and high school in the event that the structural engineer comes back and says we don't have the capability to hold these items?
So that's when we-
Well, so the first thing we'll do is come back and let you know, these are areas that were, we kind of got already a kind of go-no-go. We have a pretty good idea of where we can put stuff, but when we do the full structural analysis, if they come back and say you can't do it there, we'll have two options. One, we leave the, leave panels off, that means the system potentially shrinks a little bit. Two, we could always add mechanical attachments. We've done that quite a few times. Anytime we do slope roofs, we have to add those, but there are other installations on other neighboring district high schools that have the attachments. They're warranted before, we have the professional roofer install, they're warranted after. It doesn't change anything with the installation, although that would be a future cost that the district would have to outweigh versus the savings.
Sure.
And both districts, districts go both ways on us. Some prefer to keep the system size as large as possible and have the greatest offset and others are, you know, are looking at, does it make sense to poke some extra holes in your roof? Again, it is, it is warranted, it is safe. We haven't, not got any wood, seven years, we haven't had any problems with them yet, but it would be something that you would be able to-
Sure. And the contract itself wouldn't be signed until after this analysis is done, correct? So we're not holding, so we're not committing to anything?
Well-
Is that accurate or am I misunderstanding?
We would have a contract for you in September.
But, but what I'm saying is the analysis on the roofs would be done prior to that, correct?
No. So the-
Prior to installation, sorry.
Sorry, yeah. The way we approach solar and have with every district is we get the contract approved by the district, is agreed upon with both legal firms, Ts and Cs, and then we go out for a full analysis, we get the electrical engineering, the structural engineering. We have to walk contractors still, we still have to put you out of drawings, check out all the electrical, everything that, all the real details. We walk the contractors, get pricing, come back, we deliver you the actual full developed pricing. You still, at that point, have options, but yes, there is a contract in place to allow us to make that investment on your behalf.
Okay. And then we're pretty confident that the credits and rebates are, you know, none of us at risk. We're going to get it all.
It's important that we get started this year to ensure that we, we stay with the rates that we're cooking.
Okay. And just as a financial geek, 3% the discount rate, that was determined based on kind of like our run rate in terms of return on our investments, is that right?
3%?
Right. That's a discount rate used to-
It's on slide.
Assumptions.
That's a discount rate used to-
Assumption slide.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's the discount rate used to determine what the NPV is?
That one there. Oh, yes.
So, and to confirm, that is kind of the rate of return that we're getting for our investments at this point?
I mean, right now is, is a really hard time, right? Because interest is so high. So we took a conservative approach.
Okay.
You know, rates are, rates are going down. Friends talking about cutting, so I think going with a higher number is not sustainable.
Okay. Fair enough. Did you calculate what a break even, like what the IRR is by chance?
We did initially, but the way that the design build legislation works is it's a guaranteed maximum price and we did, so they, both proposers that submitted response came in below the guaranteed maximum price, which is what the district budgeted, is how the legislation reads. And we compared this proposal, as Sarah said, to the previous proposal from Performance Services. And when we did the initial analysis, we calculated the NPV and the IRR and we did all of that. So this is very much in line with what we originally showed you.
Was that NPV around 1.3 million as well? I don't recall.
It was a little bit higher.
Okay.
Costs have increased since we originally discussed this a year ago, but it was, it's rather consistent.
In the phase, okay. All right. I'm good. Thanks.
All right. So your request of us at this point is to just give you a thumbs up again to continue with the progress that's been made. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time too, sir.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions, Board? Thumbs up?
Yep.
Diana, your thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. So why don't you guys stay put? At least one of you anyway. I'm a-
I'm a project.
Yeah. I tried to get Nicole to stay up here with me, but-
So next up will be tentative budget?
Yes.
Let's see if I can find that.
See you in a few. Okay, so I've structured this presentation to first go through the 24-25 budget process and the results that we're looking at for the tentative budget, and then we're going to move into the 23-24 year-end preliminary results. So we're going to do sort of the budget first and then move into last year, which I know feels a little bit backwards, but that's going to set us up to start talking a little bit further about capital project funding.
Awesome.
So as always, again, we're keeping in line with our mission, empowering personal excellence in every learner. And if the budget does not meet or touch every single one of our objectives, then I don't know what does. So just a good reminder, Board, for the legal requirements for a budget adoption. So school districts must adopt their budget by the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year, which is September 30th. Prior to adoption, the board must place a tentative budget on public display for at least 30 days, which will happen tomorrow. And then we will conduct a public hearing, which will happen on September 3rd. So our operating revenues, this is very consistent with what you're used to seeing. Our local revenues are of course our largest source, which is consistent with most school districts in Illinois, specifically in the Chicagoland area. You might remember that our federal revenue has fluctuated over the last couple of years[1694.24]
Okay, so I've structured this presentation to first go through the 24-25 budget process and the results that we're looking at for the tentative budget. And then we're going to move into the 23-24 year-end preliminary results. So we're going to do sort of the budget first and then move into last year, which I know feels a little bit backwards. But that's going to set us up to start talking a little bit further about capital project funding. Awesome. So as always, again, we're keeping in line with our mission, empowering personal excellence in every learner. And if the budget does not meet or touch every single one of our objectives, then I don't know what does. So just a good reminder, board, for the legal requirements for a budget adoption. So school districts must adopt their budget by the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year, which is September 30th. Prior to adoption, the board must place a tentative budget on public display for at least 30 days, which will happen tomorrow. And then we will conduct a public hearing, which will happen on September 3rd. So our operating revenues, this is very consistent with what you're used to seeing. Our local revenues are, of course, our largest source, which is consistent with most school districts in Illinois, specifically in the Chicagoland area. You might remember that our federal revenue has fluctuated over the last couple of years as we have been receiving ESR funds. So this is much more in line with what we're used to seeing. There is still about $230,000 in ESR funds as we finish up our last couple of projects over the next month or so. So this won't change much moving forward. This is rather consistent with what you're used to seeing. So our operating revenues are budgeted to increase 3.2%, which includes the 230-ish thousand of ESR. Our local revenues have benefited from increases in interest earnings. We saw that over the last couple of years, specifically last year. And we're seeing the same thing right now in 24-25. I've budgeted four categorical payments, three current and one late, which is what you're used to seeing. We always joke that maybe one day the state will catch up with that fourth payment, but I'm not anticipating that that's this year. I do have the D sub issuance in this budget, and I did that for a couple of reasons. One, it was in the five-year forecast, so I wanted that to remain consistent. Putting it in the budget does not commit you to issuing D sub, but it gives you that flexibility if you choose to do that. As we talk a little bit more about capital projects, this might be something that you don't issue. It might be something that you do. It is in the budget to give you that option. Our non-operating revenues, nothing exciting here. Of course, you know, all of our referendum, referendum bonds for 2020 have been issued. Very exciting as we move forward with the new referendum. If we do have an opportunity to sell that in this fiscal year, that's always still an opportunity for us. Our operating expenditures, again, this is very consistent with what we're used to seeing. Our salaries and benefits, of course, are our largest expense, as we know. Purchased services following, and the majority of that really is due to our transportation expenses. Our expenditures do include ESR funding, which I've mentioned. Salary and benefit, I did separate it this year between ESR with and without ESR. With ESR, our salary and benefit budget is budgeted to increase 3.3%. Without is 4%. We had significantly more ESR funds last year in salaries and benefits. This year, it's really, almost all of it is living in Fund 20 as we finish up some final projects. So there's no salaries and benefits for ESR funds in 24-25. Supplies, purchase services, and capital has a 2.4% increase. Because the ESR funding was so minimal, I didn't break out the two of those. It's very consistent. For our non-operating expenditures, we are still spending, excuse me, spending our final $18 million in referendum expenses in this fiscal year. Of course, where exactly that lands will depend on when the actual expenditures occur. And you might remember this from previous years. Since our revenues for the referendum construction were received in prior fiscal years, we continue to show a deficit in the fund balance for capital projects as we continue to spend that money down. But once we move through the rest of the spending this year, unless we were to issue new bonds for a new referendum, we wouldn't see that next year.
Can I just ask, so then in the all funds, you would also see a deficit then each year?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, yes. In the all funds, yes, not in the operating funds. Yes, thank you for clarifying. That's correct. And now that we've committed our referendum funds, this point is a bit moot, but of course, the referendum funds must be used for the voter-approved referendum purposes. So our FY '25 operating budget summary, I have a net surplus of 1.8 million. It is a bit higher than what we were anticipating when we did the five-year forecast. And the majority of that is due to increased interest earnings. We also saw higher-than-anticipated new property coming into the 20-23 levy year, so that has benefited us as well. So the next steps in the budget process, as I mentioned, the tentative budget will be available for public inspection. The board will have a public hearing on September 3rd. The board is scheduled to adopt the final budget on September 17th. Of course, administration will fire, file with our required agencies posted on the district website. And again, we will be submitting the budget for the meritorious budget award. Any questions on the 24-25 budget?
Pretty quiet group. So the application for the meritorious budget award, is that an annual?
It is. So the narrative document that you have, the, one of the budget items that's in there, you'll see, looks very consistent with a piece of the meritorious budget award. So that section is kind of ready to be distributed through the rest of the document, which takes a considerable amount of time. So we've got a little bit of time before we need to submit that.
Just to clarify, passing the budget a month from now does not, with the D sub, that doesn't tie our hands?
Absolutely not.
In terms of making decisions about that?
Correct.
So we might be talking about those D sub dollars in a few minutes here, right?
Yes.
So if there's no questions, we'll, no more comments. We will move forward with the next steps. We'll get it posted starting tomorrow, get that clock ticking so that we can have our hearing on the 3rd and then adopt the budget later.
Yes, and unless I learn any new wild things, this is the budget that I would anticipate for you to see again on the 17th of September.
Just for, just for the rest of the board's benefit, what are some of those things that might change besides interest?
Yeah, if interest were to drop, for example, CPPRT. The state decides to issue a fourth payment or a fifth payment or something like that.
So something really unusual then?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving into FY '24. The results that I have for you are preliminary. And I want to talk about a couple of things that are resulting in what you're going to see. So we mentioned at the finance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago that we were exploring an alternate way to recognize our property taxes. So we budget about 50% of each levy year in each fiscal year. So, you know, each year we are receiving our levy taxes in the calendar year, which always splits two fiscal years. The last couple of years, we have come to you and said, our spring taxes were stronger. Or our spring taxes came in very late, which benefited us in the following year. We continue to see that, and our auditors have helped us with a solution to that. So because we budget 50%, it makes sense for us to recognize 50%. Then we're not tied to the timing of when the property taxes come in. So our auditors believe that this would better, better smooth our revenues for the two fiscal years and not have us be attached to the timing of the receipts. The way that we budget will not change. We will still be looking for 50% in the spring, 50% in the fall, and we'll now be recognizing it that way. So what does that mean? It means that we will be restating prior years in our audit report. It's nothing anybody has to do here. It's all done by our auditors. But it's going to essentially increase our fund balance in a prior year for revenues that we received late, which is a benefit to us. And then whatever our surplus is in this fiscal year, we're able to make decisions on how we would like to spend that money. I know that's a little complicated, so what questions might you have?
What questions should we have?
I know it sounds really complicated, but you might remember us saying each year, we had late spring taxes, which landed in the fall. Or, you know, we're not getting early fall taxes in the prior year, but then each year it just kind of keeps accumulating. So this gives us an opportunity to sort of restate where those revenues truly belonged in the levy year that they occurred in. And then us moving forward, our actuels will be more consistent with our budget, and we're not having these fluctuating years. Thank you.
Would that change, we wouldn't have a surplus at the end of the year? Like the last few years, we've had a surplus.
Correct.
Like a, like a moderate surplus.
Yes.
So would that help alleviate that? Because that feels, I mean, percentage of the amount of the budget versus the amount of the surplus. It might be a 1%, but it's a large dollar number.
That's correct.
Is that accurate to say that?
That's correct. So what will happen, because in 23-24, we received late 22 property taxes from the spring. How many more years can I say in one sentence? So in, in calendar year 23, we received levy taxes from 22, which was split between 22-23 and 23-24. We received spring taxes from 22-23 in 23-24 that belonged in 22-23. So what will happen is our auditors are going to restate that to the fiscal year that it truly belonged in, which will increase our surplus and keep us in line with our surplus policy. So essentially, last year, if we had a $1 million surplus and we received, we didn't get all of the property taxes we should have, the auditors are going to move it back to that year, which is just going to increase our fund balance.
And, you know, the question I had when we talked about this was, is this going to have an impact on our cash flow? And the, and the benefit here is because we have such a rich fund balance, it's, you know, the, while the dollars are large, it's not going to, it's not going to impact our ability to pay our bills or anything along those lines. It's just a matter of accrual versus cash basis accounting. And so it's really not going to, it's going to make us look better, to your point. It's not, it's not going to hurt us. And like I said, it's not going to impact our ability to pay our bills.
Certainly not.
But would the surplus be smaller? Like instead of the.
In future years?
The $1 million, would it be 500? Or would it, would it go back? I'm not following. I'm sorry. I'm trying.
Well, the, the surplus for 23-24, I'm going to talk about in just a second.
Okay.
But what it should do is that the, the conversations that we're having with the board aren't going to say, oh, we received late property taxes, so it's increasing our surplus. So what the hope would be is that it's stabilizing our surpluses and that they're more in line with what we're budgeting for. We, of course, have no control over the interest rates, for example. We don't know exactly what we're going to get in CPPRT. We don't ever know what we're going to get in our transportation claims. So there's a lot of uncertainty around the revenues that we're receiving. It's been in our favor the last couple of years. That, that can always change. We've had odd timing of our taxes, but thankfully, they've been coming in rather consistently overall. We continue to see about 90%, or I'm sorry, 99%, maybe even a little more in some years. So we're getting the money. It's just falling in weird places, making it look like we've got these kind of off surpluses. So it will stabilize that for us.
To restate the question, if we increase our fund balance in the previous year, does that increase the chances that we might have a deficit one year because we took some money out that would have gone towards our surplus?
No. No, that wouldn't, no. This'll, this'll stabilize the fluctuation of year over year. Leah, you're not convinced?
I'm, it's, I'm wrapping my head around it. It's a lot.
I know.
And now it's officially after 9:00 P.M.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not your fault.
Not your fault at all, no.
Okay, so.
We've a lot on the agenda.
So are, is everybody good? Everybody? Got your questions answered?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. So our 24, a 23-24 preliminary projection is an $8 million projected surplus. That is more than we have seen over the last couple of years. You might remember the $2 million in the PFA reimbursement, which is preschool for all, or we might call it the Early Childhood Block Grant, which has been designated to the plumbing and the AC. So the.
And that's part of the $8 million.
Correct. Yes. So the remaining $6 million, as I mentioned, we had the benefit of increased interest earnings. We took not a too conservative approach when we did the budget, but Barry and Steve specifically might remember talking about that and how did we want to approach it. They came in much stronger. We saw some additional CPPRT, which you might remember. We talked about last year, we've reduced it over the last couple of years. That's our corporate personal property replacement tax, which has been a little uncertain, yes, has been a little uncertain, came in a little bit stronger. We also had the benefit of a little bit higher transportation reimbursement, which that's not finalized until like November, December. So for the year that we're in now, so we don't always know what we're going to get. So that was one benefit. So my recommendation is to pre-fund our FY '25 summer projects with about $2.6 million of this surplus, which would alleviate having to issue D sub for our '25 summer projects, leaving us with a net surplus of $3.4 million. I do have a recommendation for that as well, but before I move on from that, do you have any questions? And again, this is preliminary. Our auditors, these are our calculations. We don't have final numbers from our auditors, but we feel very confident about this.
So we would pre-fund the summer projects by issuing D sub, right?
No, you would pre-fund the summer projects by doing a transfer to the capital projects.
Oh, and then we would not have to issue D sub?
Correct.
Okay. No D sub, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To pass that savings along to our taxpayers.
Yes. Again, that'd be for the third year then, if we did it that way. Okay, that's right, great.
What is our long-term history in terms of pre-funding our summer projects with the prior years? Is that something we've done frequently or?
Last few years.
I can't speak to prior to me, but this would be our third year of doing that. COVID really kind of changed the game for us. And, you know, we, I remember we were taking a lower assumption on what we thought we would get in property taxes. And then it came in stronger, came in consistent with what we were seeing. So CPPRT was another thing, interest earnings. There's been some unexpected revenues.
And I think we under-budgeted for COVID because we were afraid that we didn't know what would be happening.
That's exactly right.
We under-budgeted.
Right.
We did, yeah. We assumed a lower assumption. We did.
Yeah, and, and sliced a lot of costs. Yeah.
But even seeing these high numbers, rejection for, for next year, as you just presented, was, is, is 1.8.
Correct.
Right? So how would you like, are there any more questions on where we are? How, how do you recommend the, the 3.4 then gets used?
So I, I do have two projects for you, which are in my next presentation. Would you like a sneak preview or would you like to?
Are we ready to just jump into that presentation?
I have a transition.
Whoa. I think you have to wear your golden hat if you.
I know, I was thinking, I wish you had put on that.
Okay, so I know it is getting late.
It's a short break, maybe?
Break?
Oh, break.
Can I get one? I'll take one.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you want to take a moment?
Just take a two-minute break, how about?
Okay, okay.
Three minutes.
Three minutes?
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Diana, we're taking a break.
Oh my gosh, you got them all? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good.
I should probably take a break. I'll just follow up. Thank you, though.
Congratulations, Steve.
I know, I know.
Also, Gem programs, we've mentioned that? I don't, I didn't have it in my presentation.
Oh, sorry, because they, this is just, we wanted the board to have a copy of the inaugural Gem publication from this year that was initiated and developed by our first corporate jet. Awesome. That's awesome. All right, we're taking a break.
Now you only have two minutes.
Yeah.
Anything for your flexibility? And then on Wi-Fi?
Cool.
I guess not. They're locking you out.
I'm glad you called it because I was thinking it really hard.
Five years, something like that. And so I'm, I'm assuming that the flooring is many smaller projects that get added up to a two point nine.
Right.
Yeah, I was just to say, I alphabetized these because there may be priorities within each one that we would be tackling in future years. So it wouldn't be that we were doing all of the flooring in one year, for example, or all of the lighting in one year. We may, but likely you're going to have higher priorities within each one of these categories. Would you agree?
Yeah, for, for an example, playgrounds, we are not going to spend nine hundred thousand dollars on one playground. Right? That's actually a combination of five different sized playgrounds based on the playground policy that, that we have in district and the age and what year based on escalation. So all of that was built into these numbers that we're presenting to you today. So that's actually five playgrounds paving is touching many buildings throughout the district and that's how all of these categories are.
So, so like you're roofing seven point nine million, that Grove is part of that seven point nine million? Or is this two point nine?
In addition, we pulled Grove out.
You pulled Grove out?
Yes.
Okay.
And what you're historically seeing in our summer projects are just the three things mentioned, paving, playgrounds, roofing. And then we always talk about what, what fits within the dollar value that we're able to spend in that year is how we're tackling some of the projects. So coming into it with larger dollar values, we're able to tackle some of these larger projects each year if we're spending more on our capital projects.
So historically, in the last fifteen years or so, we haven't been able to tackle things that, well, we, we have, but it takes up the whole summer. If you pick something that's two million dollars.
Correct.
It takes up the whole thing. So doing something like the Grove roof is, was, hasn't been feasible.
Correct. If we want to continue to do.
Just like high school plumbing.
Yes, if you want to continue to do a playground, if we want to continue to do paving, if we want to continue to be tackling roofs year after year, then we wouldn't bring forward one single roof because we want to be able to do more projects.
So Leah, to kind of refresh the conversations in the fall, right? These are the projects that early in the fall came forward and the board gave direction to the administration of the referendum amount can't be, you know, can't be so large. Can you come back with what would be the first things that you would recommend? And those are the items that we've been discussing as we've been really looking at that seventy-five million dollar ticket item, right? Plumbing, windows, doors and flooring, mechanical systems. Those were the highest of this list, but the list still existed. Now, if those were the highest items, we're now coming back and I, you know, asked the team based on the board's feedback last time to prepare for a capital conversation of what would be next in the list. So the Grove roof of all the roofing projects of, you know, nearly eight million, that would be the next up. That's why they're making the recommendation today, right? And then there's a sequence of after Grove, do you know it off the top of your head or no, which one would be probably the?
Lines.
Probably lines would be the next one. So the team has their working list of condition, age and so forth that they're working from. Does that make sense? Does that help answer your question of?
It does.
Why didn't we talk about it? We did actually. These were presented back in the fall and the board gave direction to the administration of we can't add thirty-five million to this referendum question along with the other auditorium and the other needs that were identified. The board asked us to pare it down and that's how we landed on those first set of items. This is next up.
I guess I'm just getting a stomach ache thinking about the referendum and thinking about this and that we can't ask a big ask again.
Yeah.
You know, we can't.
Which is why this is so important. Right, which is why this is so important to us.
It's just big numbers.
Can I ask though philosophically, when we have a surplus, don't we put some of it into our fund balance?
Okay.
We certainly have, yes. So, I mean, that's where we end up with a large capital projects fund balance.
So, so then, yeah, that's my question. What are we at right now?
Well, right now it's fifteen million. You can see what we earmark.
Well, but percentage wise, because don't we have to be between like twenty-five and forty?
We don't, we don't do that for capital projects because the, the fund balance percentage is always based on revenue.
Sure.
And since we are not generating revenue into that fund, we don't qualify it in the same way.
I get it. What I'm saying is, but the actual fund balance itself, where, where are we at? Because don't we take that three point four million that's in the operating funds and use that as our buffer to increase that percentage?
That's what they're asking essentially for us to do is to take that three point four, move it to capital projects fund so that we can do those two projects.
Correct, and that will still leave our operating fund balance in line with our policy.
And that's what I'm asking. So if the operating fund balance will still remain in policy?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Leah, to maybe help, I would recommend, let's have Sarah and Nicole address the next slide, which kind of shows then how we address these things and increase the capital so that keep diminishing that list and it, by doing more projects and having the funds to do more projects, it relieves the burden of us having to be worried about the next referendum. Right? Because we're, we're allocating more money and we're taking more projects off that list annually.
Thank you. So this right here is an example. The next slide is going to talk sort of about our timeline and what's next, but there's some work that needs to be done still. So one of the things that we have been working on, Nicole and I and our teams, is our long range facility plan. You've heard a lot about that. That will be done in December. In that amount of time, we will also be working as an administrative team on cost saving initiatives that we are able to do internally as well as come to the board with some cost saving options for the board to consider. So how do we accomplish this is, is kind of a multi-step process. So the anticipation is that we're coming to you with our five-year forecast, which is the perfect time for us to be talking about our budget assumptions moving forward and maybe some changes that we're able to make. We, we often come to you with some cost saving options, cost cutting options for you to consider when we're doing that process. So that will be part of this. So Nicole and I took a look at some of the high priority items on the list that you just saw and we came up with a five-year plan of a incremental increase. So we're not coming right out of the gate saying, let's do six million dollars next year. We're saying, okay, let's start with, okay, that's this.
I was gonna say.
Because I have a plan for that. I'm not, we're not hitting the ground running for a few years of making cuts to the tune that gets us to six million dollars. The six point four that you're seeing in twenty-five is our already approved twenty-five summer projects. And then the, which we're pre-funding with our twenty-four, excuse me, our twenty-four surplus. And then the three point four million additional surplus is getting us to six point four million for twenty-five. So when I say next year, I really mean next year's budget, not necessarily next year's spending. I apologize. So this is just an example. This is an example with true projects that we have sort of behind the scenes. But how we're funding that is kind of the what's next. So Nicole and I will continue to work on our long range facility plan. As I said, December is our end date for that. We'll continue to work on our five-year forecast, planning with administration. And then when we come to the committee of the whole, we'll have a, a plan for you for the next five years of what that might look like as well as some cost saving options that we've identified and maybe some for you to consider.
So I could look at this, forget twenty twenty-five for a second, right? Because it's at six million. We're basically saying we would add about two million in twenty twenty-six, two and a half in twenty twenty-seven. Three million above and beyond the two point five-ish.
Yes.
That we normally spend.
So, yeah, we do about three million. So it's two point five in D sub plus five hundred thousand out of operating. So, yeah, so about one point five to two point five, three.
Makes sense, guys. So we're slowly increasing over time.
Does it level out at some point or does it always go up?
I believe it's gotta, right?
Well, it kind of always goes up, but six, six million was the target.
Yeah, six point one, I believe is the target. And yes, that, that is of course increasing over time with inflation. But then we are hitting, like, right now, we're going like this, but then we will be going in a little more steady increase. Which, as you know, D sub for example, if that's a way that we're funding our capital projects, that goes up incrementally with CPI. So that would be rather consistent with how you'd be increasing once we sort of hit our new normal.
So with this D sub issuance, would we would, it would restart in twenty twenty-six or?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Again, I put it in the budget to give you the opportunity to, you could issue it in twenty-four, twenty-five if you chose to, which would go into our capital projects fund and allow us to spend that down to some level. Of course, the capital projects fund is not replenishing itself. So there's only so much that can be reduced from that before we're in a position that we couldn't fund projects that were to come up. So we want to, we still want a healthy fund balance in our capital projects fund, but there are some dollars that we could spend out.
So for the purpose of budget planning, you know, if you can go to that next slide, you know, this is, this is the administration's way to try to demonstrate to the board and community like, we're working towards those goals that we've talked about. We know there's a concern with making the investment that meets today's dollars for construction and, you know, all of those ongoing facility, right, needs that we're not funding it adequately. So we picked the model. You've heard that before. This is our commitment over the next several months that we're going to do the work to try to identify, you know, some of those cost saving options for the board's consideration when we get to the committee of the whole meeting. There's some things that will be available in order to start to fund this at a higher rate in identifying those things. At the same time, the team is going to be putting together that five-year, that long range facility plan so that the board and the community can see, here's kind of, by funding these things and doing it, here's the projects. We just gave that thirty-five million overview, but here's the projects that the community can count on that we're going to start checking off that again reinforces the notion that we're putting more there, lessening or diminishing the need for another referendum anytime soon because we're taking those steps. And it aligns well for that committee of the whole meeting in January to bring those two pieces of information at the appropriate time for consideration. Does that help?
Great work.
Thank you.
Seriously.
Well, because it's a lot, right?
Sandra and I had this conversation earlier of, I, I can't imagine more things at, for them to prepare for a presentation tonight of really thinking through Bill two twenty, new referendum question, tentative budget and also the task of, you know, increasing and changing what we've been doing for a number of years when it comes to the facility investment, so.
More than a dozen years, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe just one more request then.
Yeah.
For, for Weekly, would you mind getting Dr. Wekelman, um, just what our fund balance is if we were to not add anything into it? Or, or bank any of the addition?
You mean if we did move it to capital?
Yeah.
If you, uh.
If you didn't take the three point.
Like the operating fund balance.
Put this three point four into our operating fund balance and then would you, how would you fund these projects or you would not?
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying because we're, we're going to move it to capital fund, I can't talk.
You want to know?
The capital fund budget. Yeah, I want to know how close we are to twenty-five percent. I want to know how close we are to twenty-five percent.
You want what?
I want to know how close we would be to twenty-five percent.
So, um.
Unless you know it.
I did, not with this three point four, I excluded that from it. Um, I think that we were hovering around thirty percent, which is consistent with what we've been at for the last couple of years with the restatement of the property taxes.
Okay.
Is keeping us in line with what we've been. Oh, yeah, the three point four would go up, yes.
Okay, so, so even because the restatement would help us get to thirty percent. Okay.
Correct.
So then, yeah, that's a fair amount.
You're saying the auditors were recommending we do something different. You've done that already for this last year then?
They, we've done the math on it to see what it looks like. Yes. Mm-hmm. I wanted to talk with the board before we.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, you're ready.
Finalize that, but yes, we're ready to do that.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. I just want to make sure we're not at like twenty-five point five percent.
No, we are not.
Okay.
No. And again, it's not finalized, but my preliminary.
Sure.
calculation is about thirty percent.
Perfect.
You'd be screaming if we were getting it to down to this low.
Yeah, my first year. I'm out. So.
That's a good question.
The, the, are you supportive of the, of pre-funding the twenty-five summer projects with our surplus? Each year we come to the board with a resolution to do a transfer before we finalize our audit. Are you supportive of that? Are we still considering the three point four million? We can have that all put together at one time. Of course, we don't have final results yet, but just so I have a direction for, as we continue to wrap up the audit.
I'm comfortable with what you've presented.
Yeah.
I'd like to make sure we, we stick to, you know, understanding that long range.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the key is the understanding where, I mean, that's great. We, we have the surplus this year, but we can't count on that. We have to figure out how we can find it internally, you know.
We'll count ourselves.
To be good about it.
How old is the roof?
The Grove roof. Is it, a part of it's original?
It's forty years old.
Forty years old.
Four years old. Have we had leaks? Have we had leak problems?
We do. Um, that's part of that deferred maintenance that we put in place where we're maintaining it, but identified as a priority because it's time to fix it.
That's why I'm asking, let, you know.
We have multiple additions and you, you know, the roofs are all different and, I mean, the high school has that problem too.
Yeah, we see that at the high school, absolutely.
There's so many additions.
So we're on it if we fix it.
Maybe.
Just throwing it out there.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, so again, we will, if going out to bid and, and such, will, will come to the board.
Great.
To approve the bid on the roof. But, um, we'll continue to work on this and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you facilities too.
Your first big presentations.
Presentations.
Yeah, in four parts.
All right, board, shall we go back to first reading of board policy or board meeting format? You guys tell me.
Yeah, let's do policy.
All right, I'm looking at you, Melissa, with the sign. Come on up, come on up. Nine forty.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, I'm probably fully charged, but that's why you can keep it.
Hi.
Hello.
Are we excited to talk about policy?
Look at the enthusiasm. I love it.
Of course.
Get organized here.
Of course.
Okay, so before we jump into the first reading of board policy relative to our five updated Title IX policies, I would like to take a minute and just provide the board with a brief overarching update to Title IX in general and some of the shifts from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
So on April nineteenth of twenty twenty-four, the United States Department of Education released the updated Title IX rules. And then on August first of this year, the Title IX rules went into effect and it's the expectation that all districts have their board policies approved and in place by August first. However, we did not have our updated policies back from press and we did receive those in the district on Friday, August ninth. And then we had our policy meeting this morning, which leads us here today. So as a reminder, the following areas fall under the Title IX legislation and regulations. Recruitment, admissions and counseling, financial assistance, athletics, sex-based conduct, treatment of pregnant and parenting individuals, discipline, single-sex education, employment as well as retaliation. So when we think about the Title IX in terms of legislation in general, the major shifts from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four include the following items. The twenty twenty-four Title IX regulations include an expanded definition of sex-based conduct, changes to hostile environment, sexual harassment definition, some protections for conduct outside of the United States and off-campus behavior. It requires annual training for all staff members. The inclusion of additional supportive measures as well as expanded protections for pregnant students as well as employees. And so as you all know, we have been in constant review of the updated regulations as well as in constant contact with our district legal counsel. It is the recommendation at this time of our legal counsel to adopt a twenty twenty-four compliant policy. And so the United States Department of Education cannot enforce the twenty twenty-four rules against the district at this time. Therefore, the district can still implement and enforce not only this policy and policies, but also our other policies as well. And then one last bullet point is that the impact of the Kansas injunction regarding the Title IX regulations is on the United States Department of Education as well as its Office of Civil Rights and their ability to use the twenty twenty-four rules in an investigation if a complaint is filed against the district.
Against that Kansas district.
That's the Kansas injunction. So there's two separate legal issues at hand here. So the injunction that originated in Kansas and then there are multiple other states involved in that statewide injunction and the cases that are relative to us, it's still makes it so that it's the, it, uh, it makes the US Department of Education not able to enforce the twenty twenty-four rules, not our district. So it's relative to the Department of Education, if that makes sense.
So you're saying if we adopt these policies, we are now able to enforce these policies?
Correct.
And we asked the question of, does it, does it diminish our ability, right? For us to enforce other policies? We specifically asked that question of the attorneys. Remember, the, the injunction is about the Department of Education's ability. But locally, this board of education sets this policy and other policies, right? And we can enforce any of our policies that are in place. And if the board were to move forward and adopt this policy, now, could we have a complaint come forward that were in violation? Yes.
Of the injunction.
Of the injunction. That can, but to be clear, local boards of education, according, you know, this is the question I asked of the attorneys. The board sets policy and has the ability to enforce its policies, right? Once the board takes action after a second reading, they become the policies of the district. And so I just want to make sure that that's clear because that's, I think, an important question for the board's consideration.
Well, and it's different from what we heard this morning, so.
Yeah, so if we adopt the policy, we can as a local board enforce the policy, which this morning we were not clear that we could enforce it, but we asked our legal counsel today.
Which is why, yes, I felt it was important because that's a consideration.
However, the issue was that, sorry, that, that we felt by not, okay, let me go back a step. When we thought we couldn't enforce them, we thought that by not adopting them, we were putting ourselves at risk of litigation for not adopting them. But in my opinion, it now sounds like by adopting them, we're putting ourselves at risk of litigation or pending against us.
For, for adopting them, right?
Yeah, for adopting.
Both, both situations are true.
Okay, so we have to choose.
There's, I mean, and let's be clear, there's nothing to stop anyone from bringing a suit forward for whatever they think cause of action warrants the suit, right? What Melissa said, which I don't know if you, in addition to seeking the legal opinion on does the board have the ability to enforce or is that in question? The answer is no. The advice of our law firm is that the, the exposure to the district by not having the current guidelines in place, which the injunction does not speak to, it's silent on, it should frankly be helpful if it did address that. But because it's silent, there is still an expectation that our school district and other districts have that new policy in place. And the exposure by not having met the first requirement of having the updated guidance in place puts the district at risk. If you go the other way, there is also the potential for litigation, right? That could occur because we've adopted the new policy, should someone bring that forward. But I asked the attorneys that question too. I, the attorney's opinion is that it is unlikely, first, they'd have to demonstrate what, what harm? What, what is the cause that you're bringing the suit forward when we're right now required to have the new policy? It'd be hard to, but, you know, anyone can come up with any reason for that. I want to make sure the board understands, both paths have risk. Whether we choose to take more of a status quo and let the, the current suit in Kansas play out, there's some risk there. There's also risk on the other side of adopting the new policy that, in other words, you pick either lane. It's not like you've just removed that from the equation. It's, it's about tonight, where, where do we as a school district want to sit? I will tell you administratively, a lot of, a lot of the updates in both policies, we're still going to make sure our students, if someone's being harassed, that we're thoroughly investigating and we're addressing it and providing, you know, those supportive measures for anyone that's involved in that situation, right? Does that help? Kind of give some guidance?
No, absolutely. I, I guess I'm still, I'm getting confused between the Kansas as opposed to the named districts. And I guess I'd like to maybe have a little bit more understanding in the one we're named in now you're saying doesn't prevent us from adopting and enforcing.
That is correct. It doesn't prevent us. What, what it doesn't do is it doesn't prevent somebody from filing a complaint against us for having the new guidance or if we had a situation. We can't get around the potential for suits on either side.
Has anyone ever filed a complaint against us for having the twenty twenty policies? Uh, probably not, right? Okay.
Can we just take a moment just to, just to express which policies we're talking about here? Because I, you know.
Well, some are just about Title IX in general.
They all fall under.
But what, you described a lot of things, but the policies that we're talking about moving forward to second reading are about the grievance procedure, staff development, so that's a training piece that you talked about. And prohibiting harassment of students and teen dating violence, so.
It's largely about protection and training, so protecting our students and training our all staff.
I just wanted to frame that. We're not talking about curriculum or.
Right, not curriculum.
No, we're talking about protecting our students, providing a grievance procedure and developing our staff. Yes, there are five policies that we would like to review tonight for first reading. So I just, to me, when I read through th- those titles and when I read through the policies, you know, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the, with the twenty twenty-four. And moving these policies forward as, as presented. Okay, would you like me to just step through each, each one with a brush? Yeah, I think it would be good of you to step through each one. So let's start with two colon two sixty, which is the uniform grievance procedure. So this policy states that effective August first of twenty twenty-four, districts are required to have an internal process for filing complaints regarding discrimination and harassment based on race, color and national origin. And another topic of conversation at our policy committee this morning was about the part of the policy that talks about the investigation process specifically related to parent attendance at an investigation. And so this sentence from press was deleted because it is not legally required and it is not practical for districts to seek parent or guardian attendance at every investigatory meeting. So we had a lengthy conversation at our policy committee meeting this morning about this does not mean parents are not informed and involved because absolutely parents and caregivers are involved anytime that there is an investigation. However, this specific part of the policy talks about the parent attendance at an investigation. And I would also like to remind the board that we have another policy in place, seven colon one eighty, about the prevention of and response to bullying, intimidation and harassment, which was just updated in June. That requires us as a district to notify families within twenty-four hours. So we are very much following our practice of informing parents. However, parents do not need to be invited or present at every investigation.
So the statement here is just again that notification, right? We'll notify.
Of attendance.
That they may attend a meeting.
But you're saying that seven.
But you're saying it's covered in another policy.
Right.
In terms of the notification, yes.
But does that prevent them from attending if they so choose?
No.
No.
No, and our administrators may based on the circumstance, right, right? Like if they know a child may be more comfortable with a parent in attendance, then they make that decision to call. And I would say our administrators, you know, Melissa just stated, we just went through training again. I, I think we understand the needs of our community to communicate with our parents and keep them informed and, and work with us on these things. I think what's a question here is that if it's in policy that we do that, it could actually deter or slow down our ability to continue to look into matters. If there's language that says that we will notify his or her parent or guardian that they may. that they may attend any investigatory meetings in which the child is involved.
But again, the word there is may, though, they may attend, so. By getting rid of that, the parents still may attend.
Yes, but we're not required to notify them to attend. They still, they will be informed, they may attend, of course, but this part is stricken from this particular policy.
Yeah, I have to be honest, I wasn't comfortable with this this morning, and I'm probably still not comfortable with it now. We were given great examples, except for, as to understanding the reasoning behind this. I guess I just feel like a Title IX complaint is so rare and so, such a big deal that removing the parent from any part of the process seems risky to me. I, you're not removing them. I just, I don't think this is your average, you're bringing a kid in because they pushed Billy in this hallway sort of conversation. This is a bigger conversation. And I, I still, in my opinion, am a little uncomfortable with this portion.
This just says to notify.
Most of it's under age eighteen.
To notify that they, they may attend, I wonder, because we have seven one eighty, that requires notification within 24 hours, can we make a reference here to that policy? Saying that that policy will be followed so that, you know, so that whoever is reading this knows that parents are going to be involved, they're going to be made aware within 24 hours. It's just that they may not have to be a part of that initial questioning process, right? So, because that could be.
Something like parental notification will be enforced per policy.
Per policy seven one eighty.
Something like that.
Diana said she liked that, too, just in case she. Does that make you comfortable?
Yes, yeah, I just, I don't, and I said this morning, I, it worries me when we remove parents.
No, I agree.
And we never had, because we have that other policy. Sorry, go ahead, Diana.
She said she agreed.
Oh, okay.
No, I was just saying that I agree. I, like, that whole line being struck made me a little nervous, too, just removing the parent part. But I think if there's a reference to some form of notification within 24 hours, that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable.
Okay.
That makes sense. We'll bring a revised version back.
Anything else that we need to talk through on this one?
No, other than the fact that you'll notice that instead of complaint manager, anytime you see complaint manager, you will also see or designate.
What that means is, right now, with the current regulations, the complaint manager, those listed, are the ones conducting the investigation. Twenty twenty four guidance allows for designate, meaning we have a situation occur. Principal's the best person, not two complaint managers for this district are the only ones that, per policy, can investigate. It allows the district to assign an administrator, going back to, that's exactly why we had all of our administrators come in this summer, to receive the training, so that not just the two complaint managers, but all of our administrators understand and are equipped to do that.
Thank you. Everybody comfortable with that?
Because of the training, is there a level of consistency amongst the people doing this? Because if there was only two of them before, it would be consistent, right? But if it could be a whole bunch of different people, have they all been trained so that they would all do it the same way?
Our administrators did go through a training, a very in-depth training on July 29th with our legal counsel, so everyone is investigating in the same.
And, you know, also, the designate is probably, in all likelihood, going to still be consulting with our complaint managers, right? They're not going to do it, you know, completely on their own, just because they're the designate. They would likely be working together and in conjunction, so that consistency piece would still be there, because you'd still have two people overseeing it for the district.
So, and out of curiosity, because you guys have referenced the training a couple times, since we hadn't adopted this, and we hadn't gotten any of the changes through Press Plus, was the training based off of 2020 Title IX or?
Well, yes, because what it, the training provided was, you know, it did provide the comparison of 2020 guidance to the new 2024. But the focus on it was making sure that we understood the updates to it. Many things in both 2020 and 24 are consistent, like as far as the investigations and stuff. But there's some nuanced things that, that changed, like this ability that we can now utilize designate, because the principal actually may be the best person to have that conversation with a child versus bringing a complaint manager in. So there were, but the meat of it, a lot of the investigation, a lot of the process and stuff is very similar. But again, like the expectation is that we have new policies. Part of that new policy stipulates administrators are required to get new training with the 2024. In other words, ahead of adopting a policy, we felt it was important as administrative team, because that's called out in the requirements that our administrators are trained on. So that's why we went ahead, knowing that there was, you know, the potential that we may go a different direction, but we wanted to be proactive, and frankly, summertime, it was a good time for us to bring our administrators in rather than pulling them out of the building. So we went ahead and did the training, so.
Can I ask, though, why is Title IX taken out? Number two, you know, I mean, that's obviously what our big discussion is. So we have our Uniform Grievance Procedure for everything but Title IX complaints. I'm just wondering why it was taken out?
Yeah, this, I'll talk about this a little bit more in the next policy. So in the footnote from Press Plus, this indicates that everything, all complaints are processed using Policy six colon two six five, which is the Title IX Grievance Procedure. The one that we are referring to right now is the Uniform Grievance Procedure.
So everything but Title IX, and now we'll talk about Title IX next.
Everything inclusive of Title IX, and the Policy colon, or two colon two six five is the Title IX Grievance Procedure, which was completely rewritten to include all the shifts to Title IX.
Okay, let me see if I can state that another way.
Yeah, I'm a.
I understand your question. So two colon two sixty covers everything except for Title IX. A grievance procedure for everything except for Title IX.
Yes, and then two colon two six five is the Title IX Grievance Procedure.
Okay.
Which we're going to talk about next.
Which we're going to talk about next.
Yes.
So that makes, that helps me understand why it's stricken from two colon two sixty. So we would update, so is the Board comfortable moving forward with two, bringing two two sixty forward for second reading with the modification on page three to the investigation process to refer to the notification of the parents in the other policy?
Yep, seven, seven one eighty.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, are we good? I'm seeing thumbs up, hearing thumbs up. Diana?
Yes.
Okay, so now let's talk about the Title IX Grievance Procedure, two, two six five.
Yes, so two two six five was completely rewritten. So in Board Docs, you'll see the current version of the policy as well as the updated version. And so when you're reading in this policy, you'll notice that it has been rewritten in response to the final regulations implementing the 2024 Title IX regulations. And so, for example, one major shift that you'll see is all of the definitions that are currently called out in our policy have now been moved to the exhibit within our Administrative Procedure Manual. So it's not that the definitions are not in there, they are, they're just in our exhibit from our Administrative Procedure Manual.
Okay, so just so you know, in, in Board Docs, I only see the one, two, two six five.
Yeah, you have to go to the policy meeting to see the old.
Oh, yeah.
If you want to, if you want to do a, so we loaded the new one. Yeah, you can go to the policy meeting, or you can look at our website right now and see the 2020.
Because I was reading through this one, like, what changed?
That's what I asked.
Yeah, there's nothing that's color-coded, because it's all, it's all rewritten.
Okay.
And so this includes everything that I stepped through at the beginning with the major shift. So the expanded definitions of sex-based conduct, the changes to the hostile environment, protections for conduct outside the US, supportive measures, the expanded protections of pregnant students and employees.
And tell me again, where's the, the definition of? I, I don't see the definition in this.
I didn't see a definition either of it.
It says definitions per, how do they word it? As defined Title IX parentheses, Title IX sex discrimination is prohibited, but where's the definition?
It's under, it says definition, the section under that, definitions from thirty-four CFR. Complaint means, complaint means, respondent means, retaliation means, right? Those are the definitions.
But that's not, that's not defining sex discrimination or sex, that's not defining anything. It's giving people's names and everything.
So if you look at the third paragraph, Barry.
Which page are we on?
Some of the very first page, very start of the rewritten two colon two six five. The third paragraph, last sentence, under the Title IX Sex Discrimination Prohibited. That last sentence, those, that is the expanded. So Title IX Sex Discrimination Includes Discrimination on the Basis of Sex Stereotypes, Sex Characteristics, Pregnancy or Related Conditions, Sexual Orientation and/or Gender Identity.
Okay.
And, and not to belabor this, but going back to the original, because I have the current one to. I think, and, and, and yes, they do add the, excuse me, gender identity. But other than that, the current one, I think, has a much more comprehensive definition of what. So I, you know, I guess I, I'm just concerned that we define, we're, we're talking about how we handle complaints, but I, I don't feel like we have a robust definition of what exactly constitutes.
Can you expand on what you're referring to with the current policy?
Okay, let me see, I'm going back to look now.
Well, and Barry, actually, I think that's part of what the complaints are. And from first to is the broad.
The broadening of it?
Well, yeah, and like, I, I think we need to be very clear, we talked about this. This, it's, Title IX has zero to do with curriculum and compelled speech and/or teaching, you know. So I think, I somewhat agree with you, Barry, I think this is very much a, there's a lot for interpretation here.
Again, I, I just got this today, so I'm still, I mean, I'm raw in my observations, I haven't really been able to. But, you know, the, the section, again, I'm going to the current one, I know we don't all have it, but the second paragraph, to me, just seems more. It includes more, I don't know, it gives us. And, and again, I'm not against including, I just want to get my terms right, gender identity in addition to, you know, the other population groups or. But I, I just felt, feel like this policy, and this, again, this is my observation, you guys, if you disagree, please convince me, doesn't do a great job of defining, it tells us the procedure if something happens, but what, you know, what? If somebody makes a complaint, I, I just feel like we don't have a definition here to say, yes, that fits into this policy or.
So it's a definition of harassment that's, that seems to be missing, right? I just pulled up the current one, that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
So that's at the end of the, on page one, examples of sexual harassment. That piece is what you'd like to see included in the new policy?
Or, I mean, if somebody wants to reword it, I mean, we don't have to take it word for word, but yes, I just felt better that this has more, more to go by, more to, to fall back on, more to say, yes, that does fit into this category.
I see the paragraph you're saying, yeah.
Yeah. So could we ask you guys to look at that?
Yes, and I would also like to spend some time reviewing the exhibit. I kept getting kicked out of Board Docs and the Administrative Procedure Manual, because another shift to this policy, since it was rewritten, how everything is defined in our current policy, that was taken out and put in our exhibit for this policy.
And maybe it just has to refer to it, says sexually as, as referred to in policy, blah, blah, blah. Or, you know, I'm not, maybe it's not policy, that's not the right word, but, but yes, if, if there's something that we have to refer to, so you're just not rewriting everything. But we don't have a definition, so even if the definition is based on another footnote from somewhere else, I feel better than just not having it at all.
Barry, can you, what part of the, what part of the current policy did you want to add to the policy?
So there's, there's a, there's a section called Title IX Sexual Harassment Prohibited, and the last paragraph there starts with examples of sexual harassment include, but are not limited to. So it gives you examples.
I see, so in the examples.
Well, and it also says unlawful conduct determined by a reasonable person to be so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it effectively denies a person equal access to the district's educational program or activity.
Where are you reading?
Yeah. She's perfect, she's perfect number two.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That's in the new one, too, under, under number two. So Barry, just because I, we're going to have to go back and work on it, I want to be clear. When you, when you say definition, are you referring to the paragraph that we just cited where it gives examples of? Is that what you feel makes it more complete? Because that's not really a definition, it's examples of, and I just want to make sure we're using that term interchangeably, or? Because I'm not finding the definition part.
And I agree with you, and I feel like if we're going to redo our policy, we need a definition, and maybe your books have that. No, I, I'm not saying that the current one is great, but at least it has something.
We need examples of harassment or we need a definition of harassment? There's a, to me, there's a difference.
Well, because there's also a whole section on definitions, so I think it's, we need to be precise in our term, because the new policy has a whole definition section, so.
So does the old one.
Right, so it's a little bit confusing in terms of.
I thought when I heard you say you wanted the examples included, which is not a definition, it's examples.
You want examples of sexual harassment?
But I think, I, I'm not convinced that we have the robust definition here either, but yes, I think by having examples, that helps to strengthen the definition.
Say what, in the interest of time, what if the administrative team goes back and works on the example language that's in the current 2020 guidance, right? That fourth paragraph there? And what if we work on a definition, looking at the exhibits and so forth, and we come back? Because this is just first reading with some additional information.
Yeah, I'm sorry to do this, but yeah.
We can even do that outside of, I can put it in an update if we're able to, to do it sooner. But I think we can work on both those things potentially.
No, Barry, this is good feedback, because I, I think to simplify things, we, I think the administration just wanted to give us what Press gave us, and without adding or making amendments, and so that's why we're all looking at it together, because we're considering maybe potential holes or things we might add.
I think whatever
Right.
the Board would like us to work on, I think with the fact that there's already one lawsuit on this, I would be running whatever recommendations or adjustments our Board is recommending to make sure that our, you know, legal counsel is in agreement with it, too, that we don't further muddy the issue by further changing the, the new policy.
Okay, that's good.
I, I guess if, if you're looking at this, the other thing that, to me, jumped out is there's not a good spell out of the procedures, like. I, my understanding is that the administration wanted to make, wanted to simplify the procedures, but I don't see in the new policy that they talk about the actual procedure. They talk about enforcement, of course, you can't retaliate, but, but I'm, I'm looking like, well, what is the procedure? If there is a, especially because we took it out of twenty, what is it, twenty-two, what was the? We, since, since we took it out of twenty-two sixty, I think twenty-two sixty-five should have procedures. You know, what, what does the sexual harassment representative do to? I, I just remember the, the case we had earlier this year. I mean, you guys said, hey, we followed everything.
Right, and that's not.
I don't see that here.
But that's not in the, it's not in either one.
Twenty twenty version either, Barry.
So where did that come from?
Those are our exhibits and administrative procedures that we use outside of the policy. We have exhibits.
So this was your, this was, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, this was yours, this wasn't dictated by?
Nope, nope, so. Nope, nope, so, let me help.
Interesting, okay, I didn't know that.
With the 2020 Title IX, we did a very similar process to what happened here. When that 2020 version of Title IX came out, there was also a requirement that all administrators are trained, in addition to the policy itself, there's a set of procedures and exhibits that you utilize as administrators, a lot of resources, templates of written communication, you know, and all that, that help you walk through that process you're describing that we used last year, right? It's not in the 2020 guidance, because it's just the policy itself, all the steps and procedures and things that we need to be in compliance with sat outside of the policy, but we didn't make them up, they were actually provided as part of the press service at that time.
Okay.
Same thing here, that's what Melissa's referring to, that in addition to the policy, there lives more procedures that are more descriptive, steps included, and exhibits that can be utilized to make sure you're following the policy and you're doing the steps that are required. Does that help?
No, it does, I, because I just, I was saying, okay.
And that exists for lots of policies, like, we have a, I don't know.
It's 1015.
Just to be clear, just about every policy, unless it's really generic, has a set of procedures and exhibits that accompany you, that that's the stuff we use, that we, it's not part of policy, it's not displayed to the public, it's our working documents, right?
A fee waiver would be a good example. That is an administrative procedure, that a fee waiver process is explained in our policy, but the actual documentation and how the steps that we follow with the family are in that procedure manual.
And, you know, because I've never been on the policy committee, but I think because I knew that there was going to be some controversy, I really looked at this with a fine-toothed comb, and I just want to make sure that if we're going to do this, we, but I mean, I appreciate, you guys know more than I do, so I'm not trying to.
That's the crux of what we talk about all the time in policy committee, is like, the difference between policy and procedure, right? And policy is more, a lot more overarching, and more general.
And that's fine.
And procedure is the minutia of how to actually do things, right?
Okay. Look at who all misses experienced policy. All right, so, so we're okay to move this one forward, but we're going to look at the definitions, and we're going to look at adding examples.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we move on to 5:100, staff development programs?
Yes.
Okay, so there are three shifts that I would like to talk about. The first one is the reference to Title IX, of course, which is really a legislative update in regards to the policy, but actually, the two major shifts to this policy are relative to the deletion of the chronic health conditions, that has been deleted because the chronic health conditions that are required to be, staff to be trained on are explicitly stated underneath within the policy. And on page two, underneath number four, it now includes the legislative update of the inclusion of trauma and trauma-responsive learning environments as part of our Illinois mandated training for staff.
Can I move this one forward?
Diana, you good?
Yep.
5100, okay, all right.
Two more, we can do this.
Let's do it.
7:20 is harassment of students prohibited. So three changes that I would like to point out is, this policy also specifies complaint manager or designee, and also includes the term sex-based instead of sexual harassment, and also includes guardian next to the word parent.
Yep, I saw that, I was wondering why that wasn't there.
I think if I caught another site, it should be.
Okay, are we comfortable moving that one forward?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
One more.
Drum roll, yeah, last one is 7:185, which is teen dating violence prohibited, and this, again, is another update in response to the final regulations implementing Title IX, and another change that I would like to point out is that it strikes the words any person and has added a district employee, agent, or student, so I would like to spend just a minute talking about the word agent, and the word agent, as it relates to Title IX, is anyone who provides an aid, a service, or a benefit to the organization, so the word agent is very inclusive of all persons that would work or support within a school district, so somebody like a volunteer would be included in that term agent.
So any volunteer, we hit that one policy, was specific volunteers, but this is any volunteer, correct?
Yes.
I don't understand why it's narrowing this, though. Wouldn't we want it to be broader? So like, for example, if a parent goes to visit a school because there's a party in the elementary school, but they, you know, have some sort of negative conduct, there's like, coverage for that?
They would be covered because they're a parent within the school district, so if they're going to visit a holiday party or helping as a room parent, you are providing an aid, a service, or a benefit, or if a lot of activities that you would be doing at a school, and we did talk to our district attorney about this, as to any person, so a person who does something to somebody that has no attachment or relationship to the school district, that the school district would not be responsible for that investigation.
So is it just for responsibility sake?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, let's just remind us here, this is the policy on teen dating violence prohibited. To me, that's fine to encompass a lot of people there.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, I'm with you in terms of the room parent, I'm just saying, any parent, that's not, you know, they're on business, but you're saying, okay, I think I get you, all right.
Are we okay to move this one forward? Sounds like it, Diana, you good?
Yep.
All right. That was it for policy, right, just those five?
Yes, for, yes.
Thank you.
Those five, wow. Good work, and thank you, Policy Committee, for meeting today, and Katie for stepping in, I really, we really appreciate it.
And we'll continue to monitor, there's three weeks between, you know, between meetings, the lawsuit is changing every week, there's new updates and stuff, so we'll keep the board informed, we'll continue to monitor it administratively before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, one, next, we're next agenda item, we're not done yet.
Thanks, Melissa.
The baby shoot for 1030, is to talk about our board meeting format. So Dr. McCombe, do you want to share, if you, or if you remember our workshop, we asked Dr. McCombe to go back to his staff and talk to them about the agenda and the time, start time for these meetings, and you have some information for us.
Yep, so one of the things we talked about as an executive council, because we want to make sure we're preparing for these meetings and individuals and attendance and so forth, while also considering, you know, some of the shifts that we've seen at our schools as far as start times for afternoon and evening commitments, one of the things we discussed was, right now, we have had a 5:30 start for closed session and a 6:30 open start, shifting and potentially having a 5:30 closed still, but having a 30-minute closed session prior to a 6 o'clock start of open session, right? That 30 minutes would consist of items that are pertinent to the agenda that evening, if we have some personnel, some hiring, some of those items, but if it's a longer conversation or on a topic in closed session that would require more discussion, that really couldn't, could not be accomplished in 30 minutes, we would then go into closed after the open session ends, so start at 6, when we've conducted all of the business in open session, the board would go back into closed, and if individuals from exec council are connected to any of those closed session topics, they would come back into closed for those discussions, and we would take the time necessary to have those conversations. So worked with the team during our summer retreat and felt like that was a possibility that we could move in that direction with our board meetings. It's consistent with a lot of the evening activities at the school levels have shifted to earlier start times around that 6, 6:30 timeframe, so I think we're right in line with some of the things that we've heard from parents at our, you know, school level as far as what's the right time to have those evening activities, keeping in mind all the dynamics that come into play with that, as far as student schedules, homework, bedtime, parent's schedules, and so forth. I think parent's schedules, we recognize that there, it's opened up a little bit as far as individuals going to work, coming back to work, working from home, and so forth, so kind of looking at that flexibility that seems to exist, so. I'll stop there, and just answer any questions.
Thoughts, board, questions?
Seems reasonable to me.
I just said it seems reasonable to me, I'm up for trying it.
You know, sometimes if it's going back in closed session and we've got a serious topic, if it's late, it feels like it's hard to focus.
Like if we had to go back in right now?
Yeah.
And also, does the air turn off at 10?
I agree with you.
Think about this, though, too, you'd be going back a half an hour earlier, too, so, this is a long meeting, no doubt, right, but, I mean, we, I mean, our guidelines are to try to finish by 10. I think they would still.
Starting at 6 may help us.
Starting at 6 may help us, plus you can move around in there a little bit easier than out here, too, that's how I'm looking at it.
I mean, if we think it's going to benefit the community, I mean, I'm for to at least give it a shot.
We could give it a shot, board, and then put it an agenda item on, and, I don't know, on our last December meeting, to see how it goes, see how it's been going.
It's good, yeah.
We started it in September. Do a checkpoint, whenever, I said December, but we could do it November, we could do whatever.
Or if someone has a comment, you can bring it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
True.
And I would recommend, like last time, we would communicate to the community the conversation tonight, we wouldn't start it on September 3, we would again convey, so it's like a couple opportunities for people to understand that the meeting is going to start at 6, it would be that second September meeting, then.
Well, technically, we'd have to vote again on our meeting calendar, right? Because they all say 6:30 start.
Yeah, that's true.
So we'd have to do another action, we could do that on the 3, and then that would become effective on the.
So, so at the risk of giving more work to administration, can I make a request, or at least table, or at least present a request?
Yeah.
So for closed session, we typically don't have an agenda, would it be possible to get an agenda prior to a meeting, so maybe we can think about some things, because I know you guys will attach documents that we need to read, like resumes and the like, but I think that might help me at least prepare better for close, so I can be more efficient, because sometimes I feel like I'm asking questions, because I, you know, don't have the background.
Yeah, we, what we can do, known items, we could list on the agenda, with the understanding that sometimes things occur between providing the agenda on Thursday.
Sure.
And the conversation on Tuesday, right? So as long as there can be some flexibility, there may be some hiring updates that occurred that we were able to complete, we want to bring forward. In other words, I just, I don't want to napput things and move forward because it wasn't enough the board can just have an understanding of that, or if we have a student matter that needs to be discussed that occurred on a Friday.
Is close different, though? Because with open, we have to have 48-hour notice, but with close, you could theoretically post stuff like we do with, well, I guess, it's not close, per se, but like with the personnel report, we put stuff on the day of. I mean, in theory, we could do that, too, right?
Not the day of, but the personnel report, we try to do it by Monday.
Or Monday, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's up to the board, it's just, you know, we can do it, I just, give us a little bit of latitude for that, that there's an understanding that, in other words, I don't want to, I don't want to now create some restrictions on close in the top.
Of course, yeah, totally got it.
You could say, you know, student disciplinary matters, none known at this time, or.
Correct.
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe even when there is information, you know.
Yeah, shoot us a text, yeah.
Well, and sometimes we know that we're going to have a longer close because of whatever is going on, as a board, or as like, the board, you know.
Yeah, like we don't have contract negotiations on every single one.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, those kind of things, you need more time.
I can do that, can signal that and make sure we're communicating it.
But we don't want to be inconsistent with the public meeting time, we want to be consistent for the public.
Right, correct.
So that's kind of.
So the disciplines.
I guess I like the flexibility of, you know, 5:30 or 6:00 start for us, and then 6:30 start for public.
But are you willing to try it? Are you willing to try this?
Certainly willing to try it.
Especially at 1020.
I'm willing to try anything, start asking questions.
I was going to say, let's talk for an hour about this.
Okay, all right, so let's give it a try, we have an action item on the 3, and then we'll start it on the 17. Also on the 3, we'll have our tentative budget public hearing, we'll have our second reading of board policy that we just went over, we'll have first reading of additional board policy, because policy meeting wants to do more work, and we'll have a discussion on a referendum informational campaign, and a solar contract. Look at us go.
Okay. If we move up our board meeting start time, how does that change public hearing? Isn't this public hearing like an hour after the start of the board meeting, or?
That's our.
Oh, we can put any time we want, okay.
Oh, I just realized, we may not have first reading of board policy if our next policy committee meeting is September 10, so we may have to reconfigure that.
We'll monitor it to see.
Oh, okay. So would we?
You may need another policy meeting.
Would we potentially have another policy meeting before?
We may or may not, or it's there as a placeholder, because we know that, here's why we didn't take it off, because we know that we didn't get to everything.
Right, right, so we know there.
I'm not committing that we're going to have another one before, and I'm not committing that it's going to be on the agenda in a couple weeks.
Okay.
This is just a placeholder.
Okay.
More to come.
Sounds good.
All right. Dare I ask, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition?
Oh, she's.
She said aye.
What happened to our audience?
Diana props for staying on that wall.
I know.
I want to know what time zone she's in.